I want to call the meeting to order at 6:30 on August 4th. Please take a seat. We will begin our meeting with an invocation by Commissioner Mac McCray, and he will also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance after the invocation. If you please rise.
Let us bow to the most holy and eternal God. We bow this afternoon just to tell you thank you for all of your goodness. We even said thank you for the things that we take for granted. We pray for our brothers and sisters over in Tampa, what they're going through. We also pray for our brothers and sisters in California. You are a good God, great God, but most of all, we want to tell you as we reason here together, and tonight, we know that we're going to satisfy some, we're going to disappoint others, but let us do it with decent CNN order. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner McCray. Can we have roll call, please?
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
Vice Mayor Costello.
Present.
Commissioner Merker.
Yes, I'm here.
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 Thank you. We'll have agenda approval, additions, adoptions, corrections to the agenda. I have two that I would like to bring to the commission's attention. First of all, under new business, item A, we're going to move that item to the August 18th agenda. We have a big agenda tonight, a lot of stuff to cover, and this will just give us a little more time. And it's really not pressing, we can do it on August 18th.
A legal?
A, under legal, 12A, move that to August 18th. The second change I have is under legal, 13A, that it has to do with the red light traffic enforcement system. We want to move that up to item 3E, right after announcements, under announcements and events, it'll be item 3E, because we have people here for that that are from out of town and need to make transportation arrangements to get back to where they came from. So, we're going to move that up on the agenda. Are there any others that the commission wished to bring forth? Yes, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
I'd like to pull consent agenda B, 6B.
B, like in?
Boy.
Boy, Bravo? Okay, B.
Bravo.
Got you. Anything else? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. We'll move right along, information by items and members of the city commission. I'll start with Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll pass tonight since the agenda is quite lengthy. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Merker.
The same.
Vice Mayor Costello.
I'll pass tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
I was in a place where the granite block most cell phone reception, so I haven't been in contact with anybody.
Okay. I attended three different things, and I, some of the, mostly, some of the other commissioners were there too, so I'm gonna, and there's a time, I won't bring those up either, but they all went well. So, we'll go right on to announcements and community and special events presentations. The first one is to hear the legislative update from State Representative Bobby Powell. Representative Powell, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and thank you, Commissioner.
Excuse me, you might want to go over there so you could?
That might be better?
Yep. Unless you like me, you could talk backwards.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and Vice Mayor Costello, Commissioner Merker, McCray, and Fitzpatrick, also everybody on the dais. Thank you for allowing me to come here before you tonight to present a legislative update for the city of Boynton Beach. My name is Bobby Powell Jr. I am a state representative for Florida House District 88. District 88 starts in Lake Park, goes through River Beach, Mangonia Park, West Palm Beach, Lake Worth, Lantana, Boynton, and Delray. And let me just tell you something, Boynton is the best city in my district.
I know, I know you don't say that to any other city.
No, 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 no. Especially not on a Tuesday night.
Right.
This year's legislative session was a bit different. For the first time, it seems like we are going to be in Tallahassee almost every month of the year. As you know, we are preparing to go back to Tallahassee, but I'll give you a quick overview of session. This year's session was supposed to start on March 3rd and go through May 1st. The total number of bills passed during this year's session was 231, a little bit less than we've had in previous years. We'll focus on some of the Palm Beach County and Boynton Beach issues. I'll tell you a little bit about special session. As you know, we just finished one special session. We have another special session upcoming, and after that, we'll be preparing for another special session. And I'll talk about the budget, which is the reason we had the first special session, and some of the legislative items that were important to me and important to the district this year in Tallahassee. One of the biggest things that we focused on in Tallahassee this year was the tax cut package. As you know, the governor had anticipated that there'd be a $700 million tax cut here in the state of Florida, which sounded really well, and people were looking forward to it. You know, with this tax package, I was a supporter of the $429 million tax package, but in that tax package, there were some things that, of course, I agree with, and other things that were not so agreeable. But, it was a tax cut program set up for the citizen in the state of Florida, so I took the good with the bad, did a cost benefits analysis, and figured that the cost, the benefits outweighed the cost in terms of this tax package. Some of the things that were highlighted in the tax package this year were the communication services tax, which was, we saw a reduction in that. In the state of Florida, we'll save the average citizen about $20 per year on their cellphone and cable bills, which ends up being about $1.66 a month that you'll save on your taxes from your communication services. The back-to-school tax holiday, as you know, we've had the back-to-school tax holiday many, many years. This year, we've extended that day, those days until, we'll have 10 days, I believe it starts on August 7th, and will last 10 days from that point. For students who are in college, we know that college textbooks are unreasonably expensive. So, sales tax on college textbooks this year has been eliminated for students who are in particular classes. If they're taking a class and that's on their schedule, they won't pay taxes on those books. There's the brownfields credit that allows funding for brownfields, and you know, as we redevelop and our CRAs are continuing to move forward and make our cities and counties better, that brownfields program is important, as well as a boat repairs program for those of us on the East Coast who have ports and things like that, which will allow people to reduce the amount that they spend on fixing their boats and bring some of that business here into the district. The biggest thing that happened in the legislature this year, which kind of is the reason we're supposed to go through May 1st for the legislative session, we ended up leaving on a few days early in the House because of the budget, but mainly because the Florida Healthcare Insurance Affordability Exchange, which is called the FIX program, that was prepared by the Senate, was the thing that the House and the Senate could not get together on this year. And because of that, we broke down a little bit early and ended up going back to Tallahassee on June 1st to work on the budget. The Senate and the House budgets were about $2 to $4 billion off, and in the state of Florida, when you have a $78 billion budget, billions are a big thing to overcome. So, we worked on that, and we ended up going back to Tallahassee on June 1st. But, what that FIX program would have done, it was the Senate's version of healthcare expansion, and it would allow the people here in Palm Beach County, there's over, I think it's almost 200,000 people who don't have health insurance, and some, many of those people are working, it's the working poor, who can't afford to have insurance. And this was a way that we would expand that to many of the people who can't afford to live and have insurance and go to the doctor, those people who are using the emergency room as primary care. We did not do that this year. There's still opportunities, we hope, to move forward in the coming years, but we weren't able to do that. So, we ended session abruptly, and we came back and fixed the budget later. One of the things that might be very important to Boynton Beach, I know it's important to our sister city in the South, is the sober homes. This year, we passed legislation that would allow sober homes to voluntarily register, and it's a slippery slope because, you know, these homes are covered by the ADA, you know, in terms of fair housing and the different things that are put in place to make sure that people are able to live. But, this allows for sober homes to register voluntarily and go through DCF for the certification process in order to get many of the things that are necessary to remain a sober home. So, this kind of puts things in line for a lot of this, the growth of sober homes here in Palm Beach County, especially in areas like Boynton Beach and further south. For me, what was very important this year is, as I told you earlier, we have 231 bills to pass in the legislature. Now, it'd be nice if everyone could say that they pass legislation every year, but that just doesn't happen, and it's almost not feasible. Each and every one of us who are state representatives has the opportunity to pass, I'm sorry, to file six bills. That does not necessarily mean they'll pass, but you can file six bills. Many of us do not have the opportunity to pass one bill, especially in a year like this when we ended early. A lot of things died because we quit session, or we prematurely ended session. But, I was able to work with Senator Arthenia Joyner on the Senate side to pass House Bill 3, I think it was also called Senate Bill 6, which added sickle cell to the list of diseases that could qualify for close the gap funding. And the closing the gap grant is a grant that's distributed, I think there's, I know there's a certain amount of funding that's distributed every year for closing the gap programs, things like morbidity and mortality rates, dealing with obeseness, dealing with heart disease, dealing with, and these are things that look at racial and ethnic disparities. This year, we added sickle cell to the list of diseases because in the state of, in the state of Florida, I think we're number one when it comes to people who have sickle cell disease, and it allows those organizations who provide education for sickle cell disease to apply for grant funding. Doesn't mean they're going to get the funding, but they can apply for it, and that pool of money that's there, if they meet the qualifications, they'll be able to get that funding and continue to help people in this district who, by an overwhelming majority, my district, people suffer from sickle cell disease. We also were successful in passing online voter's registration, which many of us know that, the state of Florida, we're known for voting issues. But, this online voter's registration will allow people to sign up to vote online. It'll be a secure website. It doesn't start until 2017, so let's not be confused, you still have to register to vote for the 2016 election, when many of us, like me, will be on the ballot, including presidential candidates as well. So, that online voter's registration doesn't start until 2017, so for now, let's just make sure we continue to vote the way we've been doing it. Some of the bills that I filed, that are important to me, that did not pass, are discrimination in employment practices. We have a name for it, we call it, we also call it "ban the box." That's where people fill out a job application, and on the first page of the application it asks, "Have you ever been convicted of a crime?" We feel that that prevents a lot of people from having a second look. You don't actually know what somebody's done, you don't get a chance to speak with them, don't know if they've changed their life, you don't know what the nature of the crime is, but if they've checked that box, many times, they've checked themselves out of employment, and in a state and in an area where we say people go into the system of corrections, rarely do they come out corrected. And also, for me, another thing that's very important is the criminal prosecution of juveniles. Here in Palm Beach County, we were known, and still kind of are known, as one of the highest rates of direct file in the nation. What that means is we're taking our children who are between the ages of 14 and 17, filing them into the adult prison system, and once they've been filed as an adult and that action is taken on them, they are always considered an adult. And, as you know, if you're 14, a lot of our 14-year-olds don't think the way you would think a mature person would think. You may not give them the benefit of the doubt because people should know right from wrong. However, there are situations where people get caught up in these things, and, you know, it gives them, we wanted to streamline the process. That legislation moved forward a little bit this year. The legislature thought that it was too much of a fiscal attached to it, so it did not pass, and we couldn't move it out of the Second Committee. It got a hearing, it got a lot of attention, but it started the conversation. A lot of the things that failed this year that we didn't hear, part of it is because of the way we abruptly ended session to go back on June 1st. Enterprise zones. Enterprise zones have been very important for us in Palm Beach County. That takes, it took some state funding to create enterprise zones in areas where people would receive jobs, and there would be funding from the state for people to have jobs and work in those areas, to build those areas up. In 2015, that program has sunset. Actually, it sunsets, I believe, in December, and there's nothing in place to bring that back. So, next year, we'll work on a different type of program. We worked a lot behind the scenes to try to get something in place that would help to stimulate our economies the way enterprise zones were set up to do, but that wasn't, we weren't not successful in that. Gaming and decoupling, the gaming issue, we met with a lot of people, we had the Seminole Indian Compact that came before us, well, we, me and a team of other people, we met with the Seminole Tribe of Florida to discuss the Compact. Nothing happened this year in the legislature. Part of that was probably because we abruptly ended. Uber, we were supposed to do something with that. We moved forward in the House on legislation involving Uber, or transportation network companies, you think of them as Uber and Lyft. There's a big fight here in Palm Beach County between Uber and the taxis, and that went all the way to Tallahassee. Unfortunately, Tallahassee, we did not solve that problem this year, and I anticipate that it will come back next year, and we'll probably work on it again. These are some of the items that were worked on in the budget. As you know, we took a big hit in Palm Beach County in terms of our budget, but some of the things that Boynton Beach was able to receive are outlined here. Boynton Beach received some transportation dollars in terms of grants, some funding for the Women's Club and cultural facilities, and there's a lot of funding that has been applied for through the state. Some of the things, I think, I can't really see it up there, I think the Women's Club window and door repair program, that was scratched from the governor's budget, but this year's budget, and I'll tell you this, Mayor, City Council, City Commission, when we put together the budget, let's always work together to make sure the things that the city needs are in there, because as, as you know, if we get it in and it gets scratched, I mean, that's one thing, but if we get it in and it gets through, it continues to make the city better, and we can continue to thrive. And, that's pretty much it. That's a quick overview of this year's session. I'll tell you, we'll be going back to do congressional maps on next week, August 10th, and then we'll be back in October, the end of October, to do some Senate district maps. So, your senator in Boynton right now may not necessarily be your senator next year, depending on how these maps are redrawn. It's skewed a great deal in Tallahassee, and in a nonpartisan way, I'll tell you, I am a Democrat, and the way it's set up right now, there are, in the House, there's 120 members of the legislature. 81, 81 of those in the House are Republican, and 39 are Democrat, and on the Senate side, there's 40 members of the Senate, there's 14 Democrats and 26 Republicans. And anytime there's that much of a shift in balance of power, it's very difficult to be fair and balanced when one side controls everything, and it doesn't matter whether it's Democrat or Republican. I think that we need to come closer to the middle so that we can work better to solve the problems of the state of Florida, as opposed to, you know, one side controlling many of the things, and that's what we're looking forward to. I will take this minute really quickly to introduce my legislative staff who are here. Tragic McCoy is my legislative aide in the office, and Delano Allen, who is my district aide, and I will tell you, I have the best staff in Palm Beach County. Anything you can take and do, these two can do and make it better, and they are responsible for this great presentation tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative Powell. Does the commission have any questions, Representative Powell?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
The subject matter of gerrymandering, has it ever changed? Meaning, you know what I'm saying. I mean, it's a fact of life, it's a fact of life probably in every state in the Union. It's just a matter of the party that's the underdog has to work harder.
I agree, absolutely. In, I think it was 2012, we passed an amendment called the Fair Districts Amendment, and there were certain criteria put in place to ensure that the legislature drew Senate district maps, House district maps, and congressional maps in a manner that would be fair. Their intent was to follow that. Unfortunately, if you've read some of the articles that have come out in the newspapers and the media, you'll see that there were some things that have come to light that were not as straight and narrow as we would have hoped, so therefore, we have the great opportunity to go back to Tallahassee and fix what wasn't done the first time.
Any other questions?
As I say, Representative Powell, I'd like to thank you for your hard work and due diligence for your constituents in your area, and continued a good fight up there in Tallahassee for us. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Costello. Thank you. We appreciate you being here tonight. Oh, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Well, I'd just like to say Bobby Powell's my rep, and I'm happy for it.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. Representative Powell, I'm glad that you all passed legislature for sober homes. This is going to be too focused, I'm going to ask the city manager now, do we have sober homes coming in here voluntarily, you know, trying to set up, because District 2, we're getting inundated with sober homes, and I'm trying to find out, the city of Boynton, are we doing anything? Are they stepping up to the plate volunteering?
Well, I think the new legislation that is a registration that would happen at the state level, but we're?
DCF.
Yeah, at DCF. So, we have no control over that other than to encourage it when we can, but yes, we have many coming in.
Okay, I'm going to state this, we need to encourage it, because I'm saying, you know, right down a block from my home, we got a sober home. A block up from my home, we got a sober home. The street over, we got a sober home. On 11th, we got sober homes. I'm just saying, it looked like all the sober homes are hitting District 2. They're hitting District 2. Looked like a lot of them, the majority.
They got them in my yard.
They got them in your yard?
In my neighborhood.
Oh, okay. But, I'm just saying.
They're all over the city.
Okay, let me go this route. I'm going to tell the city manager, I want you to give me the number of sober homes that you all know that sits in District 2. Give me the number. Thank you.
Well, just while you're on that, I'll just say, you know, while the legislatures did what they could as far as sober homes, and made it a place where people could register, it's a volunteer thing, and the good ones will volunteer, the bad ones probably will not. But, it's more than that, it's, they're protected basically by the national, from the United States through the ADA, and so we do what we can through code and our police work and stuff like that. That's the best the cities can do to address them. It's not that we're not aware, and we're doing all we can to try to make sure they don't ruin all our neighborhoods, but it's going to take an act of the Congress, the United States Congress, to really get a hold of this, and they do have, I know that a senator who's trying to push it up there, they're trying to get the ADA to relook at that to see whether sober homes should even be under their auspices or not, so that's kind of where that's at.
Mr. Mayor?
We thank you for your work.
Mr. Mayor, let me just continue. In regards to sober homes, okay, our city right here, the code enforcement officers, they had brought it to my attention because they told me, they asked me, said, "What is this home down there?" Because I went down and told the people, "I thank you all for moving into the neighborhood, I wish you all well." I thought it was a family. Code is going to them, and I'm still going to say it to staff, I need to know number of homes in District 2. Thank you.
Again, thank you very much, Representative Powell. We appreciate your input and all the, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care. Okay. Next, we'll have a presentation to David Codri, the tennis pro at Hunter's Run, by a member of the Education, Youth, and Advisory Board, and appreciation for his contribution to the tennis carnival. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Steve Walman, I'm the chair of the Education and Youth Advisory Board.
Oh, there he is. There he is.
And, we held an event for 25 to 30 kids at Hunter's Run on April 25th. The tennis pros, including the head pro, Dave Codri, Eric Kent, Kyle Alcodri, Jonathan Goldfarb, John Barwick, and Matt Newkirk, helped the kids to learn tennis and have fun while doing it. My thanks, first of all, has to go to the Hunter's Run Board, which allows us to come in and to have this opportunity for the kids. My other thanks go to my two board members who came up with the idea of what to give as a gift, since I'm lame on that, but Mary Moreira and Dr. Tiffany North came up with an idea, and once again, thanks to the sterling work of our board liaison, Sherry Claude. We came up with a gift for Dave, and we want to thank him, of course.
Well, would he come forward? Mr. Codri, please come down, so we can all see you.
The thing you do, this is a digital photo frame. You plug it in, and you can see the kids playing and your people instructing them. I want to thank you for everything you do for the kids of Boynton Beach. Thanks again.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we'll have approved the changing, the date of the first meeting in September, from Tuesday, September 1st, 2015, at 6:30 PM to Thursday, September 3rd, 2015, at 6:30 PM, to have the first public budget hearing on proposed fiscal '15, '16 budget in accordance with the Truth in Milage trim calendar. So, that means being from the 1st September to the 3rd of December, same time, same place.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Okay, the schedule for September city commission meetings are as follows. Regular city commission meeting and first budget public hearing, Thursday, September 3rd, 2015, at 6:30 in the commission chambers. Special city commission meeting to adopt the final fire assessment rate resolution, Thursday, September 10th, 2015, at 6:00 PM in commission chambers. And regular city commission meeting and second budget public hearing to adopt the final mileage rate and final budget for fiscal years 2015, 2016, Tuesday, September 15th, 2015, at 6:30 PM in the commission chambers. Okay. Everybody got that?
All right.
All right. That takes us to item E, which is the, let me read it for you, is approve a fourth amendment to the professional services agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and American Traffic Solutions, Inc., ATS, for the red light traffic enforcement system. And I believe we have Mr. Oyer here tonight, too. He's going to give us an overview.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Harvey Oyer on behalf of American Traffic Solutions, which is your red light camera vendor, and has been for about?
Mr. Oyer, excuse me, before you go any further, will you let the audience know that you are a lobbyist for ATS, please?
He did.
He did?
Yes.
I didn't hear it. Thank you.
Well, I don't know that I stated I'm a lobbyist, but I do represent them.
Thank you.
So, what I'd like to do, because I know you have a large meeting in front of you this evening, I want to take a few moments and review your program, the last four and a half years of the program. So, first of all, interesting coincidence of time, this week marks the beginning of National Stop on Red Week, which is a week sponsored by the Federal Highway Administration that aims to educate drivers about the dangers of red light running and reduce the number and severity of crashes. So, it's probably a timely moment for us to have this discussion. As part of that week, there has been a top 10 list generated nationwide, why we should all be more conscious about stopping on red. I'm not going to read this to you, you can all read, but I want to pause for a moment and allow all of you to absorb the staggering numbers of fatality, morbidity, and mortality that we deal with as a nation every year. It has probably affected the lives of most people in this room. Most of us know or are related to someone who has been killed or maimed by a red light runner, and the dollar cost to us societally as Americans exceeds $200 billion a year. And this is trauma hawks, ambulances, paramedics, Medicare, Medicaid, lost time at work. It's an extraordinary cost to our society that is completely avoidable. This is the other half of that top 10 list, not generated by my client, but national facts generated as part of the Federal Highway Administration week. So, let's talk about Boynton Beach in particular. You are now four and a half years into a five-year contract with my client. It commenced in May of 2011, and just to back up for everyone's benefit, Boynton Beach was a pioneer in this. You were the first jurisdiction in Palm Beach County to adopt a red light camera ordinance. I believe you were the second in all of South Florida, only behind Pembroke Pines. In fact, you even enacted it a year before the state legislature made it a uniform traffic citation. citation violation. You did it as a code enforcement violation. So your involvement in this program dates back six or seven years. But the formal program that you have now, you're four and a half years into it. You have 15 cameras up at seven different intersections. And during that time period, from the time they went up until March of this year, you experienced a 38% decrease per day, per camera, in red light running. That is right in line with the national and state averages of other communities that have red light camera programs. You'll also see that the majority of people receiving these are not Boynton Beach residents. And we'll also see that there is a very low recidivism rate, and there's a reason for that. These were designed to modify behavior, and they're effective in modifying behavior. If you get a ticket, you don't get a second ticket, or at least you're statistically unlikely, and you're very statistically unlikely to get a third ticket. The final bullet point is something that I want to point out to you, and that is, these full color, high-resolution videos of the 15-camera approaches also provide 24-hour-a-day surveillance to your police department to solve other crimes. And in four and a half years, your police department has requested and used, on 230 different occasions, this video. Let me put this in perspective for you. Other communities, including in Palm Beach County, pay a lot of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, to set up surveillance in certain parts of their city for crime prevention and resolution. You get this absolutely for free, because it belongs to you. So let's say a crime occurs in a certain area of the city, and you know that the culprit had to pass through a certain cameraed intersection between certain hours. Your police department can contact ATS and ask for the video clip from that time period. And they have, on over 230 occasions, solving numerous crimes for your community at absolutely no cost to your community. Let's talk about Florida statewide statistics. As you know, there are probably 80 jurisdictions in the state of Florida that have red light cameras, from small communities to the various very largest counties and cities in the state. And fatal crashes at cameraed intersections statewide have been reduced, they've been cut in half, 49%. We didn't get to make up this data. This is data compiled by the state of Florida, and it results in estimated 18 saved lives per year. This is probably as tough for you to read as it is for me to read, but this is Palm Beach County data, again, not compiled by my client, compiled by Palm Beach County Traffic Engineering. And on the left, you will see the numbers for cameraed intersections in unincorporated Palm Beach County, which are a good proxy for you as well, because these experience very similar numbers. The public doesn't distinguish when they've left Boynton Beach and entered unincorporated Palm Beach County and vice versa. They stop at red lights, no matter what jurisdiction they're in, if they're cameraed. And what you'll see is the data for the reduction in red light running and crashes where there's cameras. At the same time, over the same time interval, we asked the county to calculate, well, was this number increasing or decreasing at non-cameraed intersections? Meaning, is it very impressive that it's been reduced 28%? What if it's dropping at the other intersections at the same time due to reduced population or some other phenomenon? Well, in fact, folks, it's exactly the opposite. While it was decreasing 28% at camera intersections, same time interval, it was increasing 15% at non-cameraed intersections. That's a differential of 43%. The second column, if you read left to right, those numbers are 13% and 38%. If you combine those, that's a differential of 51%. So that is the real difference between a cameraed intersection and a non-cameraed intersection in Palm Beach County, using Palm Beach County Traffic Engineering data. Let's talk about recidivism. The big piece of the pie are the people that received one ticket and never received a second ticket, i.e. it modified their behavior. The next piece of the pie is people who didn't learn the first time, and they got a second ticket. And then the very small piece, under 2%, are the people with three or more violations. It's an extraordinarily small number, and that is because red light cameras nationwide, internationally, truly do modify driver behavior. These are some other data points from around the state that I thought you might find interesting. Side swipe crashes, how they've decreased in other jurisdictions in the state, very similar results across the state, whether you're in South Florida, in the Tampa Bay area, Orlando, all of the communities that have red light camera systems have experienced similar results. Where does your money go? As you know, a lion's share of it goes to the state. That's because the state legislature, when they enacted an enabling ordinance, took a lot of the money. But they also did something else for you that was very helpful. They made it a UTC violation, just like any other ticket that a police officer could give. Before that, it was only a local code enforcement violation, meaning if your red light runner didn't own property in the city of Boynton Beach, you really had no viable enforcement mechanism. This makes it enforceable against everyone in the state. It also creates a much higher pay rate. The second important thing that it did for you is many of your major roadways are state roads. For example, Boynton Beach Boulevard. The state, prior to the enabling legislation, did not allow you to place camera equipment in their state road right-of-way. After the state law was enacted, it gives you the authority to place equipment in your policing jurisdiction on their roadways, which was also very helpful, because most of their roadways are big roadways, and not coincidentally, most of the red light running is on big roadways at big intersections. You get a portion of that money, but what many people don't understand is $3 from every one of those tickets goes to the Miami Project to Cure Paralysis, and there is a direct relationship between paralysis and red light running, because most paralysis in the nation occurs as a result of auto accidents. And most of those auto accidents are created by red light runners. So if you stop red light runners, you stop accidents, you therefore stop the lion's share of paralysis in this country. $10 from each of those tickets goes to the local trauma centers, and we have two in Palm Beach County that serve us, Delray Medical Center and St. Mary's Medical Center. And if any of us are unfortunate enough to have to be airlifted by trauma hawk to a trauma center, we go to one of the two of these. And you can see, a year by year, by fiscal year, how much money from red light tickets have gone to support our two trauma centers in our community. Now, what happens when we stop using red light cameras? The public figures it out, and they start running red lights again. This is just one example, a pretty extreme example, in Collier County, where it actually increased tenfold. That has not been your experience, but let me tell you what your experience is, because our cameras are still on 24 hours a day. You're just not issuing the citations over the last three-month period since this City of Hollywood versus Arum case was handed down by the Fourth DCA. You've experienced about a 30% increase in red light running. Recall the second slide that I showed you. In the four and a half years you've had this program operational, you've experienced an average of 38% reduction in red light running. Well, folks, in three months, you've reversed almost all of the safety gains that you enjoyed over a four-and-a-half-year period. Why is that? Well, because the public reads the newspaper. And when the newspaper prints that Boynton Beach is not issuing red light citations, people revert to their bad behavior, and that behavior costs all of us. There are 52 Florida cities with red light cameras that participated in this survey. As I said, there's actually more. And the result is, all of them in the survey experienced a change in driver behavior, greater public awareness, a reduction in recidivism, the reduction in crash severity, and a reduction in the number of crashes and pedestrian safety. By the way, most of the people that are hit by this, I shouldn't say most, a large percentage are pedestrians and bicyclists. This is endorsed by the Florida League of Cities, as probably most of you know. It is endorsed by the Florida Police Chiefs Association. And this is a list of other endorsing agencies of red light camera programs. You can see that the United States Conference on Mayors, the U.S. Department of Transportation. And in all polling, even today, despite what we read in the newspaper, we still have approximately 70% of Floridians and 70% of Americans that support red light camera programs, even people who have been ticketed. Why? Because we've all experienced somewhere in our life, some loved one that has been killed or injured by a red light runner. And I'll tell you, folks, these red light cameras take all the subjectivity out of it. There is no question. It's not whether a police officer saw it correctly, had the right line of sight. This is completely objective. It's colorblind. It doesn't matter whether it's day or night, what kind of car you're driving, what neighborhood you're in. If you run a red light, if the bumper of your car crosses that white line after the light has become red, you're ticketed. So there's no discretion or bias in this. I now want to take a moment to introduce someone that is going to conclude the presentation. I had asked a young lady named Melissa Wondle to be here. If her name sounds familiar, that's because the state law is named after her husband Mark, who was killed by a red light runner down the street from their house when she was nine months pregnant with their daughter. Melissa wanted to be here. She is the national spokesperson for Stop on Red, and she's in Washington, DC, and could not be here. She sent her regards with an encouragement to continue a program that you not only pioneered, but has enjoyed unanimous approval at this commission every time it's been in front of this commission. But I did ask another person to be here, and his name is Mark Bonacani. And he probably does not need an introduction. He's one of South Florida's favorite sons. He grew up in Miami. He is the son of Miami Dolphin team captain and NFL Hall of Fame linebacker Nick Bonacani. And any of you that can remember back 30 years, I remember right where I was, sitting on a couch on a Saturday afternoon, watching college football, when the news brief came across the wire that 19-year-old linebacker for the Citadel, Mark Bonacani, was paralyzed making a tackle in a football game. The injury left him unable to move, a muscle below his neck. Yet each day, he moves people. He moves them to understand the tragedy of paralysis and to join him in finding its cure. As most of you know, Mark is the founder and president of the Miami Project to Cure Paralysis, one of the world's leading academic institutions in curing paralysis, which they're doing. He also serves as president of the Bonacani Fund to Cure Paralysis, a member of the Board of Trustees at the University of Miami, and a director of the National Institute of Health National Advisory Board. So, Mark, if you would maybe come to the other podium and share with us some of your thoughts.
Can you lift that down to him with a move? There you go. I can hear you.
Well, thank you very much for the introduction. I'm Mark Bonacani, here on behalf of the Miami Project to Cure Paralysis. Ever since my spinal cord injury in 1985, I have dedicated my life to helping others. Through the love and support of my family and my friends and my Hall of Fame of a Hero dad, we created the Miami Project to Cure Paralysis. And because of that, we are changing the way the world thinks about paralysis. We are very proud recipients of $3 from every citation of the red light camera, because it's making a huge difference in the laboratories at the Miami Project. Because of that money, we are now working on clinical trials in humans for the first time ever with cellular transplants. This will only happen because of the funding from the red light camera. In addition to the Miami Project, the trauma centers are receiving funds in Jackson Memorial Hospital, which leads the nation in trauma, is receiving funds. And I have direct communications with the physicians there, and they have seen a reduction of injuries related to car crashes and red light running. And therefore, not only are you helping cure paralysis, but you're also making a big difference in saving the lives of people who run red lights and have accidents. So when I think about my words today, I just wanted to let you all know that this is an extremely important issue that I am deeply, deeply concerned about. People have mentioned that the tickets may be too expensive. I'm talking about $158 ticket. This is not for parking illegally. This is for running a red light, probably one of the most egregious offenses that you can do behind a wheel of a car. And I think you have a unique position, where you're at, to really directly impact someone's life by making the right decision and doing the right thing. I mean, we're all here to do the right thing for our community. That's what I vowed to do, and I know as your position, that's what you vowed to do to help your community. This is definitely something that you can do to help the community and make it a safer place. Because in the end, you never know, that last red light runner that runs that red light, the next accident, as Harvey mentioned, it could be you or it could be one of your loved ones. So I implore you, please, pass this issue, let the red light cameras continue, and let's make this a safer place. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that. Yeah. Mark, I'd just like to say that I've followed you ever since your catastrophic incident. Only, first time I ever met you was tonight, but through the newspapers, I've been able to follow your life. And I want to tell you how much I admire your courage and your work in trying to cure paralysis. I just thank you for that, and God bless you.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to outline, there's four options we have tonight on this. Did you, Harvey, did you want to outline them, or... There's four options that the commission can take here.
Maybe it's better if your city manager or city attorney outlines what they are. Obviously, we would like the one that we have proposed with the city, which I think resolves all issues, both financial for the city...
Right.
And gets your program operational again, allows you to regain the benefits that you had enjoyed and since lost. And if you don't do that, there's both a financial consequence to the city, and we leave our intersections unsafe, again, as we've been for the last three months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want the audience to have...
Yes, Mayor. Shawna Bridgman, who has been working with ATS and the city manager and finance departments, has outlined what the options are that are available to the commission at this particular point. There's four of them.
Yes.
She'll review what they are and what the fiscal impact would be of each of the four.
Good evening. Shawna Bridgman, 100 East Boynton Beach Boulevard, Assistant City Attorney. So there are four options that the commission has to consider tonight. Option number one would be to do nothing. That would mean keep the cameras off, continue not to issue citations, and leave things as they are. If you choose that option, the city still has an obligation to follow the contract that it has with ATS. And so you would end up paying about $800,000 until the contract ends next year in May of 2016, without receiving any services in return.
$800,000, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Option number two would be to terminate the city's contract with ATS immediately. That's an option that you can take. According to the language in the contract, the city does have an obligation to make its best efforts to bring the contract to a conclusion and pay the monthly amount as agreed. So if the city were to choose to terminate the contract right now, ATS would likely initiate a legal challenge to the city's decision. And the fiscal impact for that is that you would cease making the monthly payments to ATS, so you wouldn't end up paying the $800,000. But on the back end, you might have to pay legal fees, because ATS would likely issue a legal challenge in court if you chose not to proceed with the contract. They would consider that a breach.
And if we lost that lawsuit, we'd still be responsible for the $800,000.
Absolutely. So it'd be the $800,000 plus...
Plus legal fees.
Plus any other penalties. Option number three would be to amend the ATS contract solely to modify the program so that we can turn the cameras back on and follow all of the opinions that have come down from the Fourth DCA, as well as the local courts. And then the contract would naturally end in May of 2016. And then the contract would naturally end in May of 2016. And a few months before that, you would have the opportunity to decide whether or not you wanted to renew the contract for an additional five-year term. The fiscal impact for that is you would pay the $800,000, just like you would anyway. And you would pay $4,750 per camera per month. ATS would not give the city any credits for the time that the cameras have been off. So any money that the city lost for the past three months would just be lost dollars. But the benefit of that is that May 2016, the contract is done completely, if that's what you choose. Option number four, which is the option that city staff has recommended and is the option that ATS is requesting the city to approve, would be to amend the contract so that you can modify the city's program, provide financial credits to the city for the past three months. You would renew the contract for an additional five-year term, so it would end in May of 2021. But you're not locked into that May 2021 completely. If by October 3, 2016, the commission decides that you no longer want to have the program in place, you have the opportunity to issue a letter to ATS and you can terminate the contract for any reason whatsoever, or no reason at all. So that would give an additional seven months added on to the normal contract term to allow for the program to move through the courts, be tested, and see how it works out for the city. And the fiscal impact for that is that you would, instead of paying $4,750 per camera per month, you would have a $500 reduction, so you would pay $4,250 per camera per month from beginning August 1 all the way through May 2021. And then you would also get that three-month credit from ATS for the three months that the cameras have been dark. So it would kind of make the city whole financially in that respect. So those are the four options that you have.
Thank you.
Mayor and commission, just a reminder that the reason there is a Fourth Amendment before you to even consider is because under the terms of the contract with ATS, once we notified them that we did not think it was legally possible to continue the contract, that same contract provided them with the opportunity to try to cure the defects that gave rise to our notice of cancellation. That is a contractual obligation that the city has negotiated. This addendum represents ATS's best effort, I believe, and they could speak to this as well, their best effort to remedy the issues that were raised in the court proceedings in the way the program is operated, to write around those procedures, so to speak, and to cure those problems that the courts have identified. However, it's important to note that the court actions are not final yet in this sense. They're still subject to appeal. There have been conflicting opinions in other parts of the state. I know that we in the city attorney's office do not believe that the ARAM cases that is so often referred to will end up being the final word in the state of Florida regarding these programs.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to respond to the city attorney's statement?
Sure.
We're in complete agreement with your city attorney. In fact, I'd venture so far as to say we're in agreement that this one case out there probably is inapplicable to your city to begin with. The reason your staff and city attorney are wisely recommending an amendment to the contract is to make sure. It's effectively belt and suspenders. So imagine there's five district courts of appeal in Florida. Only one of them has said that this program doesn't work. It just so happens to be the one that Palm Beach County is located in, and they base that on a case from the city of Hollywood, which has a different contract than you. And the reasons they cited in that case appear to be inapplicable to your contract, meaning if you were ever challenged on a red light camera ticket and that case was applied to it, you'd probably get a different result than they did in the city of Hollywood. But just to make extra sure, your city attorney has recommended, and we agree, that we go through your agreement and fix anything that could even be perceived as not being compliant with that case. So that case is called ARAM, and we refer to this as making your contract ARAM-proof. And most of that centers around who has the final say-so on the issuance of a ticket. Is it your police department, or is it a private company, ATS? And your police department has always had that final say-so, and they will continue to have that final say-so. The offending problem in the ARAM case was that the city of Hollywood had delegated that authority to my client, which the court ruled to be an illegal delegation of a city function.
Okay. Does anybody in the public wish to address this issue? Seeing none, I'll return. Well, you have to come to the microphone. Give your name and address for the record.
My name is Ramona Young, 9966 Boynton Gardens Way, Boynton Beach, 33437. I received a ticket on a Sunday morning at approximately 7:45, 7:50, somewhere in there on my way to church. And the reason why I got the ticket was because the person, and I cannot prove, the person in front of me slowed down and the camera caught my car. I never argued the ticket, I paid the ticket. But there is a place and a gap with all of this that says that if there's someone else in front of you, the camera takes your picture. I couldn't move up, I would have hit the person. So I'm just here to put that little piece of evidence in there. I don't remember the number. I probably threw it out because I was very angry about the whole thing. $458 and for the $3 that you're going to give to the Association for Paralyzed People. I think that you probably could make a donation to them in a year that would add up to more than the $3 or whatever you get on the ticket. And the $10 for the trauma centers could also be put in your budget. This was very disturbing to me because I don't get tickets. I abide by the law. And when I saw it, I thought, this is a big ripoff, and that's the best way that I can put it. And I just wanted to put my three cents in before you do your considerations and come to some conclusion on all the aspects of what the city attorney has presented to you. I think there may be another option in some way, and I think you should open your mind and broaden it to that aspect. Thank you.
Let me just, before you go, let me just tell you, if you thought you were improperly ticketed, instead of paying, you could have gone to the magistrate and explained the same thing you just explained to us, and see if he would agree that you were improperly ticketed, and he would have waived the ticket. So you had that option if you thought you were improperly ticketed.
But I didn't have the time, or the energy, or the patience to do it. I paid the ticket because I didn't want to argue. But when it came up to knowing that other people in reading and seeing different things on television and in the news and on the computer, that the tickets are also questionable there, that's when I thought that I should speak up at this meeting now. I paid the ticket, and you know what? The $158 isn't going to break me. That's not the question. The question is whether or not we should even have those kinds of things, because there's no way, the camera caught my car. The camera did not catch the car in front of me that slowed down. And it was right on Boyne Beach Boulevard in Seacrest. And when I made the left turn, the person put their brake on, and I'm the person that got the ticket. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Steve Anton, 234 Southeast Second Avenue, Boyne Beach, Florida, 33435. The red light cameras have been through the courts, and you guys are using a process called creep. It is a prostitution of our constitution. And I like that phrase, they invented that. Prostitution of our constitution, because you're buying your way into a system that will start observing us, and further and further along, it'll observe everything we do, everywhere we go. You don't see it that way. You just see these as traffic tickets. We've got these cameras everywhere. Now, we were guaranteed, according to our constitution, that we weren't going to be surveyed, we weren't going to be looked at, we weren't going to be observed, that we were free from this. Unfortunately, this little creep, this little bit, oh, I'll do it here, we'll do it there, nobody will notice, nobody will pay attention. It's the prostitution of our constitution. You guys are in the prostitution business, okay? You're taking money for doing this to our constitution because we can't, I can't go and question the camera, I can't question the technologists, I've been to court with these things. You have set up a process that somebody in Arizona is actually sending it supposedly to our police department, who supposedly observes it, and I'm supposed to be able to go online, which I can't do on a Macintosh computer because it doesn't support my browser. Oops, sorry about that. So this is a problem deeper than you realize. It isn't just the money, although the cities are getting a lot of money, and thank you very much, it's coming from us. But the problem is, you're paying, taking that money, prostituting our constitution. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. My problem with the...
Your name and address, please.
Oh, my name is Robert Pollock, I'm sorry. Been a while since I've been here. My name is Robert Pollock, I live on 210 Northeast 27th Avenue in Boynton Beach.
Thank you.
My problem with the ticket is, okay, if we're going to continue with the tickets again, okay? I've been a fan when he was paralyzed. As a matter of fact, I was in service when he was paralyzed, and it came over the news. Thank you for your courage, young man. But my thing is, okay, we're going to send $3 to them, and we're going to send some to their home. Okay, where the other money going? Now, I don't mind paying the ticket if you're going to beautify the city or put the money where it's supposed to be back in the, you know, private development. So I would like to know, with all the cut down, all the million dollars that Boynton get, where is the money going? The rest of it? Say what?
No, we can't have that discussion, please.
No, they can't have that. I want you to answer that.
Okay.
Can anybody answer that?
Well, it's a cost to us to have people that monitor to do that program. We had to hire, I think it was at least three people, was it not, employees to monitor?
Yes, there are three employees who are funded, their positions are funded through the city's red light camera program, so...
Okay, so once the million dollars, the budget broke down, and my still question still is, where the rest of the money going?
There's months when we don't get enough money to pay what we owe ATS. There's money, we don't collect enough to even pay that, and so we're working that in this last agreement, working on that. Let's say that, let's say that we collect, well, let's take a number out of the air. Let's say that we owe ATS $40,000 for the next month, and we collect $35,000. Under this program or this amendment they're suggesting to us, they would take the $35,000 and take the other $5,000 and put it in abeyance, that we wouldn't have to pay that. But let's say the following month that we owe them 40, we collect 45, then we would pay back the other five. If we got 46, we'd get to keep the 1,000. We'd still pay that five, but we'd keep 1,000. So that's how that works.
Yeah, and how do we owe them so much money, Mayor? I mean, we saying you paying them back each month. How do we, for them to, for us to be renting the cameras, okay, don't they get percentage that every one of the dollars go through there? So how do we owe them so much money?
We owe them so much for camera, per camera, 400 and, it was 400 and, 452, I think it was.
$4,750 per camera currently.
Per camera, 4,750 per camera. And there's a proposal to drop that for 500 per camera.
So long-term being, we're going to buy the camera, I mean, we're going to pay for them, right? We're not going to keep on renting them, what I'm saying?
No, we'd keep on renting it, but the idea is, the whole idea is to get people to quit running red lights and killing people, you know? In 2013, 697 people were killed by people running red lights. 127,000 were injured. That's 697. Now, it may not mean nothing to you if it wasn't one of your family members or one of your friends, but if it affected you personally, you wouldn't think that's a lot of money. But I can tell you what, if it's $158 would keep somebody from killing somebody, I'm all for it.
Like I say, I don't have no problem with the paying the money. I just want to know where the other part of it go. You know, and see, like, when we go to discuss this red light, see, like, the city should draw up a budget...
Well, I'll tell you where it goes. After we cover costs for what it costs us to run the program, the money would go into the general fund, which goes back into the community.
Okay, so we have a printout of that then, right?
Sure. We can always supply that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Brother Victor Norfus. I live at 261 North Palm Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida, District 2. Commissioner Matt McCray is my commissioner. There are three reasons why I don't think you should continue this. One, you've mentioned before, is the cost, it's a constantly incurring cost. The only way to offset is to issue more tickets and bring in more money to the city. The individuals that have come up here have not been in any accidents. So the other thing is, how many accidents are you actually presenting or have captured on camera with this that makes even those people that lives you know you have saved worked it? The other thing is, you're trying to replace the police department with electronic surveillance, and that doesn't work. Unfortunately, I am up in front of you because I was in a car accident, and I was, my truck was totaled about a month ago. I was not in Boynton, but I was in West Palm. There was a light there. I don't know how, whether that prevented that person from hitting me and totaling my truck. I'm holding my hand up because I had an operation today, so that's why I'm here. Because you cannot replace police with electronics. And if you cannot quantify the supposed lives that you are saying you are saving, then how can you possibly sit up there and say, we're saving lives, we're preventing people from having accidents? But everybody that's come up here has not had an accident. And if you yourselves have a list of the accidents that you have caught on camera, or that, you know, first of all, you should be able to catch at least one accident on camera, if those are high-risk areas. So you need to look at that and the totality of it. And in dealing with the police department, we need more police surveillance at these particular areas. I understand that budgeting and funding is an issue, but the issue is not electronic surveillance ticketing innocent people or people that may make a right turn, or individuals because you believe it's saving lives or saving accidents that you can't quantify. Anything that you guys spend money on up there, you can quantify it, say, this is what we get for it. Tell me, how many lives have you saved because of this? Or how many accidents have you caught on camera that you can say, this is what we're trying to prevent? This is why the cameras are at this intersection, we call it five accidents here, we saw 10 at this one? That's what you need to present in your defense as yourselves for saying, this is why we want to keep this program running. It should not be running. What we need is more police officers, not only in the intersection areas, but throughout the city. Thank you.
Had you listened to the presentation, had you listened, had you listened to the presentation, you would have heard that we had a 38% decrease in people who ran those red lights. How many lives that saved? Who don't know? We got them, that was a decrease, so we probably have saved lives there. And we do have figures to show that that system was working.
Yes. Originally, I was going to start my talk about how many people out there receive tickets. And I was going to, in a comical way, but it's not going to come off that way now, I did. Guess what? I paid $158, and guess what? I was guilty. It's interesting. When people are guilty, they get defensive and they're not guilty. The key to this is psychological. And what I mean by that is, personally speaking, I got a ticket. And now when I come to a red light, I slow down, I stop, and my mind thinks, I got a ticket. I paid $158. Sometimes, unfortunately, we have to be wounded, beat up, to understand what's right and wrong. The key factor here, and I kept hearing, is dollars. I'm not interested in dollars. What I'm interested is the safety of people. If we save one life, if we stop X amount of accidents, aren't we doing our job? I think we are. The word is safety. As the mayor said, as the city attorney said... As the mayor said, as the city attorney said, we saw photos what happened, people going right through the red light. And I look at everyone out there, and I say, "My God, stop looking at ourselves, think of the people who are going to help." The other point of these red light cameras, to me, is like any other creation, invention, whatever word you wanna use, they only get better, because mankind makes it better, from a TV, to light bulbs, to air conditioning, and now a way of saving and helping, safety for the people. So to me, personally, this is a no-brainer. I will definitely vote to move forward to protect the mass of the people, not individually. Again, I repeat, I repeat, I got a ticket, I was guilty, and it stopped me, and it slows me down. It slows me down every time I'm in front of a light. So I thank ATS and any other company, and with regards to the police department, I think it's wonderful that the police department has another aid to help themselves do the right thing for the safety, for the safety of the people of Boynton Beach.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Sean, real quick, what's our monthly bill to ATS? What do we pay ATS a month?
$74,000.
$74,000. Could you break that down on the city share, state share, what ATS makes?
No, because it's, those two things are not connected. We pay ATS $74,000 per month for the service that they provide, meaning the cameras, the maintenance of the data, all of that.
Okay. A $158 ticket that we collect, define, break that down for me.
The $158?
That's correct.
The majority of the money goes to the state of Florida.
How much?
I don't have, I don't, I didn't bring the exact figures with me.
How much does ATS get?
Um, I don't know.
How much does the city get?
The city gets the least amount.
The least amount?
I didn't bring those numbers with me.
Does somebody have a figure on that for me here?
We need to know.
Mr. Howard, do you have that number, please?
There's a distinction between what we pay each month, and then how the money is divvied up if someone pays a ticket.
Mr. Howard. Tim Howard, Director of Finance.
Let's work on $158.
$158 ticket.
Mr. Howard, you need to speak louder so I can hear you. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
$83 goes to state of Florida, $75 stays with the city of Boynton Beach. The, the $83...
$83 goes to the state, 75 to the city.
Okay, and what does ATS get out of that?
Nothing.
They get nothing out of that, okay. So we get $77.
75.
$75 for every ticket that we issue here.
Okay, very good.
Sean, you have that. How many communities have the, have red light cameras?
In the state of Florida?
In the Palm Beach County area.
Currently active, or have ever had them?
Have, have cameras installed?
Boca, Delray, Boynton, Palm Beach County, like, eight or nine?
Okay, eight or nine. How many are currently on cameras, working, given citations?
Uh, they are, nobody is issuing citations right now. The other municipalities, all of their contracts expired, and so they decided to wait and see what happens. They didn't, they didn't, they weren't in a position where we are, where their contract is continuing.
And what are they waiting for, Sean?
To have other cities take the forefront and bring this back to court and see what happens again.
It's, ATS right now is currently in courts now, fighting on our behalf, so to say, for the lea, legality of the cameras, is that?
Uh, not, not for the legality of the cameras. The cameras have never been ruled illegal. We are in the process of appealing the decision that was issued back three months ago on April 1st that caused us to turn the cameras off. That decision is under appeal. The same program, not necessarily the same program, but some of the same methods that the city of Boynton Beach uses, was, were challenged in Lake County, and they were successful there. The cities won those cases. There's also a similar program in Jacksonville that was tested by the courts, and they won there. So other jurisdictions within the state of Florida have ruled that programs similar to Boynton Beach's program, the old way, work just fine. And so the, the changes that we're proposing now are to be even extra sure that when we go back to court...
But that's, but that's all gonna be heard out in court, and it's, it's a turkey shoot, really, if you win. I mean, what I'm trying to say, there's no guarantee that Boynton will win.
Right, there's no guarantee that we'll win, but the fact that we've gotten some feedback from the courts gives us something to work on.
Okay, very good. Okay, with that being said, do we have some language in our contract with ATS that states that if we're not generating the income from the tickets to pay, that we have legal, we can legally terminate that contract? Is something like that?
Not that we can terminate the contract, it's a cost neutrality provision.
Cost neutral, okay.
So if, if the revenue that comes in is not sufficient to pay that $74,000 each month, we, we only pay what comes in, and what's not, what we can't afford to pay, just gets rolled over from month to month to the end of the contract. At the end of the contract term, there's a true-up, and if we, and if we don't have the money, we don't have the money.
Is that in the current contract, or is that amendment one?
Both, both. It's always, that's always been the case.
Okay, let me ask you this, if we were to turn the cameras on tomorrow, and we start issuing citations, this case that we just talked about is working its way through the courts. If we are, why would people tomorrow, who get a ticket tomorrow, pay a ticket while this is still being argued in court, and it's already been determined once that it's not legal to do? And I might not be using the right terminology, but I use the word term "legal."
Right, the court never said that the program wasn't legal.
Well, that's a bad term, I'm not a lawyer.
So, so I just wanted, because that's a misperception that's been perpetuated throughout the public for the past several months, and it's not true. Why would they pay the ticket? Because they broke the law.
Well, what if they said, what if they, they know now, and it's been posted in every major newspaper, that the courts have determined, has dismissed these tickets in court, they have, in mass amounts, so why would they get, who gets a ticket tomorrow? With that being said, why would they pay that ticket? Even though, even knowing they were guilty or not guilty, or whatever, why would they pay that ticket, knowing that they already been thrown out of court once, and it's now still in the legal process, and nothing's been determined?
Well, think, two things. Number one, the program has been modified to address all of these opinions that have been put out.
But that hasn't been determined by the courts.
Not yet.
In our opinion, that's, that's correct, but the courts haven't determined that yet, correct?
Not yet.
Okay, so what I'm saying, as it stands today, those tickets are still illegal as far as the courts concerned?
No. That's totally wrong, no.
Well, why didn't the people pay?
If you choose not to pay the ticket, you, you go the route of going to court and going before a judge.
But they're not going to, they're not even hearing it.
If they don't pay the ticket, you ultimately lose your license.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mayor.
You lose your license.
I'm going through the, the tickets now, there is no appeal process right now, is that correct?
That's not correct at all. If someone has issued a ticket tomorrow, they have, they have options. They can, they can issue an affidavit saying, "It wasn't me driving, someone else was driving." They can pay the $158. They can request a local hearing here at City Hall before the red light magistrate, and explain to the magistrate why they're not guilty. The fourth option, they can, if they don't do any of those, a uniform traffic citation will be issued. Once a uniform traffic citation is issued, that's when the information gets attached to the person's driving record. And then at that point, they can either pay a higher ticket, which is now gonna be $263, or they can request a hearing, a trial at court in Delray.
Okay, so what was all those tickets that were already dismissed, red light camera tickets?
What, what about them?
Yeah, that were already, all the tickets that were dismissed on mass.
Those are done, they're done, they're...
They're done.
They don't get resurrected, no.
Okay, so they're done. So why that process, why isn't that process still in place? Why this thing's going through the courts? That's what I'm asking. Why would I pay a ticket when I know this is still being determined by the courts, if these red light cameras are legit?
There's never gonna be an opportunity for the modified program to go through the courts if we don't start issuing tickets again. So we've attempted to make some corrections, or fixes, or whatever you wanna call it, to appease the courts, and we will never know if those work unless we issue more tickets.
Okay, but that court hasn't been appeased yet, as we're speaking, because that's still going through the process, of course.
No, it's not, that's a completely, that's, the old system is going through appeal, not the new system. The new system is untested.
So, we're gonna turn our, so you're asking to have our cameras turned back on to test the new system?
Yes.
That's, so we're gonna be a test case here? Now, let me ask you this...
It's not really a test case, as far as we're concerned. We were never, we were never wrong before, we're not wrong now.
I bet ATS is, doesn't think so, too.
So your option is to turn the cameras on and continue, or just pay the $800,000 for nothing?
My, my, my point here is that these, these red light camera tickets have been tested in courts, and they've been deemed, they've been thrown out on mass.
By, by one judge.
It's the luck of the draw. I was there, I watched it, okay? Now, you're saying, okay, we've made, we, we changed some bells and whistles on this thing, this is foolproof?
No, we didn't say...
Well, well, maybe I'm belching on a little bit.
I would never make that representation.
Okay, not as a lawyer. So now we're saying, okay, we're bringing this new program, and we're testing this now in the courts, we're bringing this to the courts, and we're gonna test it, and we think we got a strong case. Is that what you're saying, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
We've improved the process.
But, but if we get another judge, like you did in the 4th district, that could be all thrown out the window?
It's possible, yes.
Now, with that being said, is there currently a class action suit by those people who issued those original tickets, and those got dismissed on mass?
Yes, under the...
Is there a class action suit?
Yeah, against the 80-something public entities.
Would the cities be responsible for those monies to pay back to those people if they so should win that class action suit?
It's, it would be two separate groups of people, the people before the program was modified, and the people after the program was modified.
So would the cities be on the hook for that monies to pay back those people?
I don't know the answer to that, it depends on the outcome of the lawsuit.
Okay.
We filed a motion to dismiss, and that's pending.
We're talking worst-case scenario, let's say they win their class action suit, who's on the hook to pay those monies back?
The county, the state?
City?
The city.
Okay, so...
And ATS.
So the city could potentially, potentially be on the hook for quite a few dollars if that went through? Just yes or no?
Essentially.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well firstly, that's a whole different thing than what we're talking about.
It's completely separate from what we're talking about.
Fitzpatrick, I'll go ahead.
So, the cameras, one of the ladies told us about how she had a ticket, she thought it was really the person in front of her that, that was at fault. So, when people are, are they sent a picture showing their car in the intersection or something?
Yes, they're sent a picture that shows their car before it crosses the, the line of demarcation, while the light is red, and then the second picture shows the car in the middle of the intersection while the light is red. Then they also have a website that's printed at the top of the, of the notice, where they can go to the website, they enter their violation number and a PIN number, and they can see a video that shows their vehicle. In, in a case such as, as what the lady described, if she were to make that type of, of an objection or an argument in her own defense at a hearing, especially if it were a local hearing, we would have the opportunity to try and go back and look at, at the video, and see if we had any, any data that would prove or, or help support her, her, her position.
That, that's what I was trying to get at, because everything I've seen, like, 20 or 30 cases, it may have been cherry picked, but they were very scary, and they were all videos. So, when they get that, uh, piece of paper in the mail, it's just a shortcut showing a couple of pictures, but there is a video backing, the videos are running all the time, 24/7.
Right.
So there's a video of everything, so there's no, really no question.
You can't talk from the audience.
Jay, please say, I'm sorry, you're not talking from the audience.
So, the ones I've seen all show, uh, bad situations, which are kinda hair-raising. As far as, another thing was about the constitution and all, I just don't believe that you have an expectation of privacy at a public intersection. I mean, that's, there could be an old lady on, sitting on the corner in a rocking chair 24 hours, seven days a week, it would be the same thing, what's the difference? So, I don't have a problem with cameras, as far as, you know, we need more police officers, well, I agree with that, but there's, you know, there's, the, the size of the budget is an envelope, it can only be squeezed so many different ways, and it's all gotta fit in that envelope, so, uh, this, you know, having eyes on, on the, at the intersection is, is, I think, the most cost-effective way to go.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. McCray.
Thank you. I, I'm gonna ask this question of the chief, chief, you need to come down. Sir, this is not word about no national average, no anything, I'm talking about Boynton only. Since we had the cameras off for three months, how many accidents have we had in the intersections? You know, I'm just saying.
We've, we've experienced, oh, Jeff Katz, Police Chief, we've experienced an increase of 23.4% crashes in intersections.
We have, sir, that's an increase, but I, I'm just saying, like, they're saying now, they're trying to say, like, you know, with the cameras off, you know, people are losing lives, I'm just saying, any fatalities, I, I see more gunshots now than I do, that, that's what I'm getting at, you know, you know, you're gonna tell me about 27%, but that, that's not, I'm just saying, you could hit somebody on the side, and that's a, that's a, you know, I'm just saying, you know, something, somebody lose their life. Have we had any of those, sir?
We have not.
Thank you, sir, that's what I need to hear. Okay, let me keep on talking. I, I appreciate the young man here, but, you know, paralysis come a lot of kinda ways, I'm just saying, a whole lot of ways, I'm just saying. My neighbor's son dove in the pool, young guy, he's paralyzed, he's been paralyzed now for 14 years. I read on the TV about people saying that, you know, there wasn't enough water, paralysis come all kinda ways, and I, I applaud the comments that came from the individuals at this feet. I applaud the cities that's got out of these contracts with ATS, or whatever your name is, I applaud them, I'm glad they're out of them. Boynton, we are in a, in a situation where we have a contract. I can only vote for this contract up until May of 2016, and after that, you could terminate it, I, I'm just saying. I, I'm a funeral director, we don't get bodies that come out all the time saying, "This is an accident, crash," I'm just saying, you know, and we bury 260 people a year, plus. I, I'm just saying, you know, I, I got a ticket for $158, and a Volkswagen coming through an intersection, so they say I had to pay it. And, 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 sir, and I appreciate what you said about the Constitution of the United States, yeah, this, I think this is a money-making thing, we all have our opinions, my opinion is that I can only go along with the contract until the contract expires in 2016.
Let me just say that, on a couple of things, talking about the stuff going through the courts, I tell you, a lot of cities in the north, the states in the north have had these same situations, they have cameras, they went through the same processes, they had to go to court, they had to correct the way they were running their operations, and they're now operating. And many states, cities, and states in the north have gone through the same process. Each state is different, that's why we all have to go through the same different processes. I would just say this, too, that if, if you do what you say, and wanna continue it through, till May of next year, do nothing, that's gonna cost the city over a million dollars, because it's 800,000 plus the last three months, that's $74,000 a month, which we haven't paid yet, is 222,000, so you're talking a million dollars. If you don't, if you do the other thing, just say, "We quit, we're not doing anything," you're talking about the lawsuit, which is 800,000 plus the law things. If you talk about, if you go to option four, which is being presented here, the city is gonna save a lot of money, because you're gonna get, first of all, they're gonna excuse the 222,000 from the last three months, they've already stated that, don't shake your head, I just heard it, the man stood there and told you that, they will excuse that, we won't have to pay that, and they're gonna, each camera's gonna be reduced by $500, which And they're going to, each camera is going to be reduced by $500, which is a lot of money where, how many cameras do we have?
20? 15.
15 cameras, so $500 a month there. So we're going to spend a lot less money and we can still cancel the contract next year if we felt once, and by then it'll have gone through the courts, we'll know where we stand. So we'll have saved money, we'll know where the courts are at, and in the meantime, we'll probably save some lives. So I'm going to be in favor of option four.
The bottom line here is ATS is asking us to extend the contract for seven months and they'll forgive us for the past three months that we haven't paid them, but extend us seven months and then sign a five-year contract. That's basically what we're talking about here tonight, Mr. O'Neal.
With one additional provision, if I could just jump in.
Sure.
There is one additional provision that you didn't list that is very important. There's a clause that says, "The city may at its option terminate this agreement," this means the new agreement, "with no penalty for any reason on December 31, 2016 by providing written notice of its intent to terminate the agreement to ATS on or before October 3, 2016." So there's a free out for the city so long as it's exercised before October 3.
Why is ATS asking for a seven-month extension?
To recover the cost of refunding the city the $220,000 that's already in arrears.
They give it on one end and make it up on the other end, basically.
And to meet the city finance request that we reduce the cost going forward. So it's an opportunity to recover that and make us whole because we're trying to make you whole. The second part of this is when we get to May of 2016, the natural expiration of your current contract, I'm not sure, and I don't think your city attorney is sure, that these test cases will have made their way through the court system. So we're all going to be back here in the same room with another difficult decision, not having resolution to it. By adding the additional months, it's reasonable to assume that there will be a conclusion and either a court, the Florida Supreme Court, in rehearing the 4th DCA case, or some new test case will have declared these absolutely illegal and it will make your decision easy, or it will do what the other four DCAs in Florida and every other court in America has said, which is they are legal and it will make your decision a lot easier. You'll know one way or the other. So it grants the time for your city attorney to let this work its way through the court system. The good news for you is there are two other cities, and the city attorney can help me with this, I think it's Dania and Sunrise?
Davie and Sunrise. They resume their programs in May.
That are ahead of you in this process, so theoretically, their cases will be tested at the 4th DCA before yours will and you'll get a resolution without you having to test them.
Why wouldn't ATS, being a good vendor and, you know, considering in our welfare, the city of Boynton, why wouldn't they say, "Okay, listen, why don't we let this go through the court? We'll turn the cameras back on, okay? We'll forgive those three months, we'll put the cameras back on and to the end of the contract and see where we stand in the courts there." Why, why the seven-month extension?
Again, to recover the cost. Your city manager is asking us to forgive $220,000 for lack of better terminology and asking for an additional discount going forward.
Does that come over like, what's the total price of that, Mr. O'Neal?
Well, it's $500 per camera per month times 15 cameras is $7,500 a month on a going-forward basis in addition to forgiveness of, in the neighborhood of $220,000 already past due that you owed ATS contractually but that we've not yet asked you to pay. So to make us whole, because remember, there is a tremendous ongoing expense to operating this. If you look at how this operates, in addition to the several hundred thousand dollars per camera to install these, there's the ongoing operational cost. So to make ATS whole is the seven-month extension. The other piece to that, that I think is a side benefit, is it'll give enough time to find a resolution to this, so we're not all back here in February, which is when you have to decide whether or not to extend, trying to make a decision whether or not to let it terminate in May, and we're not going to have a resolution by February.
When you say May call, isn't it true that you had these cameras up five, about five years now?
Depending on the intersection because you expanded the program at one time from seven or eight to 15.
So basically, they've paid for themselves as far as ATS, as far as...
I don't know when they amortize, but you can make the argument that the earliest seven or eight cameras that were put in four and a half years ago...
Which allows ATS to make us whole.
Yes, which is why they're willing to make this arrangement.
Okay. I just, you know, I have no problem with red light cameras, you know. Do they serve a purpose? Probably. You know, I'm a victim of red light cameras too. And I can tell you, it wasn't because I was trying to run a red light, it was because I wasn't paying attention. That's why people go through intersections, that's why accidents happen. They're texting, the stress of life, they're arguing with their kids or husbands or whatever. That's, in my opinion, why it has happened. It's not somebody's trying to gun through the, you know, beat a red light for whatever reason. It's for lack of paying attention, in my opinion. The way I feel about this, this is playing out through the courts. I don't want Boynton Beach to be the test case. Why do we have to be the guinea pig here? I say, "Let's finish our contract, let it play out in the courts. If the courts determine that, hey, you've got a good system there, let's turn them back on then. We'll have that discussion then." But why, why turn them back on while it's still playing through the courts? That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Well, I just say, just in saying, people don't want to gun through a red light. If you were here, if you remember a few weeks ago, the city attorney showed us the picture and the red light came on and three guys gunned through on a left turn in front of oncoming traffic. He showed us the picture, the light was red, all three guys came and three cars went through a left turn after the light was red in front of oncoming traffic. So people do gun through it. I see it every day.
I think Vice Mayor Casello approved my case. Psychological, what happens? Families have disagreements, people have disagreements in the car, and voila, you just got into an accident or an incident. Once you experience something, if you have a heart, you have a mind and you have a soul, all of a sudden, you become more careful when you drive, especially if you have children and friends in the car. The thing that irks me is that ATS, I don't care if it's ATS or XYZ Company, they created something. Now, do I think their heart and soul is for charity alone? Of course not. They're there to make a dollar. But if an invention, a creation, is made and it helps mankind, applause to any company that has helped us. I'm not worried what they make. I'm worried about the person, and I reiterate again, the issue is safety. That's the topic. Safety, not dollars what we have to lay out, not self-guilt. It's the idea of safety and protecting our family and our friends. And this, we must go forward with. And ATS, whoever's here, I want you to keep making the piece of equipment better and better. That's your obligation.
Okay, I want to bring us to a head, so I passed a gag. I'm going to make a motion to see where we stand. I make a motion that we go with option four, amend the contract and with the particulars that were listed. That's my motion.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a pass gag. I pass to you, you got to run it now. I have a motion.
If we have a motion on the floor, we have a second. All in favor of option four, was it? Option four.
Four.
Say aye.
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 All again, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion passes. Three to two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That takes us to public audience. Anybody in the public wish to address the commission items not on the agenda may do so at this time. We ask you to come forward and give your name and address for the record. Anyone wish to address the commission? Come forward. Oh, I'm sorry, go over there. I'm sorry, I didn't see you walking across.
There's a clock at your back, so be careful.
Okay. It's loaded.
It's electronic.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tom McClure, and I am currently the president of the organization known as the Boynton Intercoastal Group, also known as BIG. BIG is an organization of homeowners associations that run down the federal highway and the intercoastal here in Boynton Beach. We encompass over 2,400 units in that area, and we've come together as an organization to further the issues that affect this group of people. I am joined tonight by a number of my fellow unit owners, and I wonder if I could ask them to stand so that the council can see how many folks we have brought here tonight to let them know that we are serious and we are focused on BIG issues. Thank you so very much, ladies and gentlemen. BIG was established in 2002 with an objective, and I'm going to read this to you to make sure we get it correct, "To provide a vehicle to gather information for the membership of intercoastal communities as well as to collectively provide a uniform voice to address common concerns." Very good mission statement, I feel. We're here tonight to introduce ourselves to the members of the city commission and to offer our support to the city to making Boynton Beach the best place for us and our families to live. As a third-generation Boytonite, I think that's what I am, I've seen a great deal of issues that have come across our community that are both good and bad. BIG is here to assist the city in making this a better community. What you're facing with the other issues before you are conundrums. What ours is a very clear message. We are here to assist the city to make it a better place to live. BIG will be addressing community political issues through our political action committee in an effort to make sure that the political leaders of our community are focused on the issues that concern our members and that our issues are supported by our community We will be inviting our community leaders to, for the state and the federal and local to address our members throughout the year.
We usually have a three-minute limit since I try to make your point, but seeing this is your first time here and you're new, I'm going to give you an extra minute to make your point.
Well, Mayor, thank you so very much. I certainly appreciate that. I will skip right along here. First of all, I'd like to thank Mike Fitzpatrick, Commissioner for Area 3, for his efforts in support of BIG and the efforts to keep our membership up to date on the community issues. I would also like to point out Officer Rita Swan, who is here with us tonight. The BIG group supports the Boynton Beach Police Department in its Citizens Observation Patrol, the COPS program. We fund the cost of the fuel for that particular neighborhood watch program and our volunteers drive the car throughout our communities. I'll talk about our golf tournament real quick, your mayor. We're going to have on November the 16th in support of our first responders here in Boynton and the COPS program. So I'd ask you to mark your calendars so that you could possibly attend this event.
What was the date?
October. I'm sorry, November the 16th. It's a Monday. We'd love to have you come. We've got all our sponsors lined up and we have almost sold out, so I encourage you to get in. We will also be holding a heroes dinner in March of next year where we are going to recognize a civic individual, a hero from the first responders, and one of our volunteers who goes forward and does above and beyond. Finally, on behalf of the 2,400-plus members of the BIG organization, we offer our assistance to the commission to make the city a better place to live and work. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate your time.
Well, thank you for coming and introducing yourself and your residence and the fact that you're willing to work with the commission. That's how things get done, is we work with the residents and the commission. We never know where the best idea is going to come from, as far as I'm concerned. I'm always open to listening because I never know who might give me the best idea, and I'm very open to that. And thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, real quick, Chief Katz, this is Chief Katz. Just a shout-out to Officer Swan. I know you have many officers on the Boynton Beach, but Officer Swan seems to be everywhere. Everywhere. Outstanding.
Next.
That's Harry Woodworth, 685 Northeast 15th Place, Boynton Beach. I'm the president of INCA. I just want to add what Tom was talking about there. We've already talked together, we're going to be liaising with those guys real tight. A lot of common interest east of federal, whether you're north of Boynton Beach Boulevard or south, so looking forward to that, pretty excited about it so far. It looks like a win-win for the whole city. Just a quick update, I think you guys got a busy schedule. Our friends in AT&amp;T are still working on the last 10 of those wooden poles. They've had that sidewalk dug up now for a little over a month. Talked to Lori, we're going to see if the city can convince them that you just can't go digging our sidewalks up and leaving it sit like that for a month. But if anybody here's dealt with AT&amp;T, I think you know what we're up against, so we're trying. We're probably a few months away from seeing the last of those damn 58 poles gone, but they are going to get going if I have to get a chainsaw. Thanks.
I saw them up there last week working on them. I think they're pulling some out, aren't they?
Yeah. The FPNL guy's ready to pull his hair out. The AT&amp;T responds to nothing because they've taken away all the oversight from the state and given it to the federal government. And we're so far below the noise level with anything we have to say, they ignore us, so pretty hopeless. The bad news is there's 40,000 more of those concrete poles going in, a lot of them in our community, and every place they do that, they're going to have the exact same problem. So this is going to be a statewide issue so fast, it's going to spin.
Harry, if I might add, they're doing that up on, in my district, up on Gateway and Lawrence, but they seem to, maybe you've got the fire lit on the, but they seem to be changing over to taking down the wooden poles much quicker than previous.
They had a little chat with Cobra.
Oh, yeah, Cobra. Okay, that explains it. That explains it.
Good evening.
Hi, my name's Sarah Younger. I'm a resident at 619 Southwest 2nd Avenue. I'm here today as, also as a solar artist. I recently received People's Choice Award at the International Connecticut Symposium in 2013. I wanted to make you aware that a number of local government officials want to see a market opened up for solar in our sunshine state and are upset with a recent action by the Florida League of Cities. Unfortunately, the league has filed a brief opposing the Floridians for Solar Choice Ballot Initiative at the Florida Supreme Court without bringing the matter to a committee for a vote. The rift between these elected officials and the League of Cities was profiled on the front page of Miami Herald as well as in the Tampa Bay Times. The Florida League of Cities Board will vote on whether or not to withdraw their Supreme Court brief at their 2015 conference, Florida Cities Public Conference, Conversation, I'm sorry, to be held August 13 through the 15 at the World Center Marriott in Orlando. I'm asking you to sign on to an open letter which asks the League of Cities District Board members to withdraw the brief. Please show your support for solar in our state. The Floridians for Solar Choice Ballot measure will reduce barriers to solar energy. It will also bolster consumer choices with competition and a free market that will provide jobs and keep energy dollars working here. So the ballot measure has been endorsed by more than 40 diverse partner groups that span the political and social spectrum. I have that letter, that open letter here. I can offer it to you to examine and see if you'd be willing to...
Leave it with the clerk. We'll take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I, this is my husband, Jonas Wright, and I'm Mrs. Wright, Jewel Wright. And we live in the Cherry Hill area.
Address.
508 Northwest 11th Avenue.
Thank you.
And we're here to make the city aware, which they probably are, are aware of some of the situations in the Cherry Hill area where there's been a lot of shootings and shedding of blood. One of the things, one of the problems that we found where it really gets escalated is when they have these block parties. And I think that was about two weeks ago, they had a party so big until even the policeman just pulled out. They couldn't do anything with, I don't know the reason they left, but it was just tremendously big. And I want to say that last week it started again, and every time they do it, we, my husband, a caller, we're calling, and we get in a kind of a panic state, I must admit, because you don't want to see young people getting killed and all this and shooting and all of these things. But it creates an environment where there's, can be trouble. So when we call, we do get response, but I recognize the fact that the policemen have to get other policemen to come in, and they have been responding, I must say, but we're coming because we want to find out what do we do or who do we meet with so that we can try to resolve some of the issues we are having. Because it's only escalating since you started improving up toward 10th. Looks like everything is flowing even more towards Cherry Hill. So is there someone can give us an answer, someone we can meet with?
I think your commissioner...
We are talking because we are concerned, not that we want to see...
I understand, but I think your Commissioner McCray is your representative and he can meet with the police chief and they can look into this and get the details from you of what's going on and see if we can pursue that. Is that correct?
Right, thank you, yes.
Yeah, he's aware to, we talk to him.
I'm very much aware, okay, and while they stand there, you know, a lot of times we have relatives, we don't like to acknowledge, but these are my cousins, so I applaud you all. Thank you. So, Chief, you got to step it up. He heard you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll look into it and see.
We appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Sonny Garcia, 1631 Northwest Third Lane, Vice President of Bowling Green. I'm here to talk on the drones. I'm pretty sure Mr. McCray has gotten a lot of phone calls about those drones going up at, or there might be open up at East El Hester.
Not on tonight. I don't think so.
Keep talking.
It's not on tonight, the drones, right? No, no, go ahead. It's not on the...
I'm pretty sure that, it was on the paper today that they're trying to make an experiment at El Hester. I have a few questions. I was talking to Wally Majors earlier. I would like for him to come over there, please.
They said they can't hear you.
In public audience, there's no interaction.
Public audience is not, you can tell us what you want to tell us.
I asked him, why is El Hester? You've got plenty of kids going there, you've got plenty of events going there, and he said more or less because it's suitable, or something like that. Well, it's close to I-95. Why can't they find a park or a vacant lot somewhere out of town where these people can fly those things? I mean, and what's going to prevent these people from staying in their designated area and not flying all over the place? I don't want them all over my house. So the situation is, are these people going to get a fine for flying those things out of their designated area? Or are they going to be booted out other place for flying those things out of the area? And like I said, why can't they find another place instead of...
Well, that's why we're addressing your concerns right now, because right now you could fly them anywhere in the city except the city parks. So we're looking at that, and we're going to try and find an area that's designated for them to do that and control it.
My question is that I talked to Wally Majors earlier before the meeting, and he says East Hill Park is a good place to fly them at. I'm saying this, why do they always pick one that neighborhood? Why can't they fly them in another neighborhood? Why can't they fly them right down Wolfright? There's a big baseball park.
I'm sure that Parks and Rec Director will bring his recommendations to us, and then we will consider it where he wants to fly them or where he thinks they should be flown. We haven't heard it yet. We're waiting for him to bring it to us.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, if they fly out of the area, I'll be back to speak on this.
Yeah, be fine.
And there'll be problems on this deal here.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mayor, Commissioners, Michael Weiner. I'm here for Future Auto Group. I couldn't let this opportunity go by without a quick comment at the microphone tonight. You're actually changing your industrial ordinances so as to allow for landscape debris We've come to you and spoken to you about some of the important things to review in terms of your industrial zoning, and one of them has to do with internet sales. It's happening anyways. My client's not engaging in it, but it's happening anyways in all of your industrial areas. I'm hoping maybe to spur some thought and have the Planning and Zoning Department take a look at the industrial area and hopefully take a look at what's occurring anyways in terms of internet sales, and maybe we can move forward on that one on the same way that we've moved forward on landscape debris stockpiling. So thank you very much, and I hope your planning department gets a chance to look at it.
Can you just give an explanation, like internet sales? Can you explain that just real quick?
Sure. What's occurring is, is that, you know, it's revolutionary what's happened in terms of the way people shop. And so they aren't visiting the particular location anymore. I mean, we all know about Amazon, Zappos, everything that's going on in the internet. People are ordering things all the time from your warehouse space, but there are times, especially in terms of vehicles and things that require title, that many times people must pick up the goods or pick up paper. Now, we're not talking about turning it into retail sales. We get it. We understand that. But there, given the modern economy and given what's being done with industrial land, there should be addressed in your zoning code a category that would allow for these kinds of casual sales to occur. You're only going to improve the use of your industrial land, increase the number of tenants that you have, and really modernize what your code does in terms of the activity of the our consumer in the South Florida area.
Thank you.
Could I ask you a question, please?
Sure.
I'm sorry that I don't understand.
I didn't mean to run over. Go ahead.
I don't quite understand what you're saying. You're saying you want supported businesses that are doing these internet sales. Define what's required, meaning is it warehouse space? What is required?
Well, that's why, you have a very good system here in Boynton Beach. You have a system that the code is changed only if the Planning and Zoning Department can bring the reading to you. You don't have private amendments to your code. So all we really need to do is to be able to give to your Planning and Zoning Department the information of how it is that we would operate, make sure that we do the things that are important to you, such as not intensify the industrial area, not have a great deal of customers and run out of parking, and then allow for the kind of activity that could occur in the industrial zone. Right now, you don't really allow any sales whatsoever except wholesale. Well, that's not really happening. The end users are actually buying goods.
For what, again, excuse my ignorance, what are you saying is required? In other words, when I think of sales, retail in the sense that you, you're making sales through the internet or whatever you're doing, is it warehouse spacing you're saying has to be?
A change in the language.
Come on.
In your zoning code that would allow for sales to their end users, not just wholesale, under certain circumstances is what I'm talking about. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to take the time.
Anyone else wish to address the commission items not on the agenda?
Hi again, Steve Anton, 234 Southeast Second Avenue, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33435. And I'm sure the chief is aware of this. There has been a lot in the paper in the last three to four weeks about underage prostitution, and it's become, I don't know if it's an epidemic or just more aware, but either kids coming in here, getting, catching rides from pedophiles to Boynton or from Boynton and things like that. It's just something that's become really high-profile that I've read about and noticed in saying, we, and I'm sure the chief knows way more about it than we, than we do, and I'm sure he's doing something about it. It's just something that we really have to look at because that is getting out in the news, and that is a stain on Boynton Beach would be very, very hard to remove. Thank you.
Seeing you brought it up, I want to compliment our police force. They just broke a big ring of teenage prostitution in this city. I think we rested like 11 of them or something in that number, so I want to compliment them. It doesn't just happen by itself. It takes a lot of police work, and I want to compliment them for being progressive in that effort. Anyone else wish to address the commission on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will close the public audience and go to administrative. Tonight, we have two, two boards that people have put in application for. The first one is the Historic Resources Preservation Board. Commissioner Fitzpatrick has an alternate appointment. He has two applicants, Hollis Tidwell and Jesse Feldman. You can pick one of them if you wish.
They both look real good, but I'm going to nominate Hollis Tidwell.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. On these advisory boards, when there is a opening and we have alternates, do they get first opportunity to, do they automatically fill one of those slots as an alternate?
You mean if there's a permanent position, like?
Yeah, if a permanent position opens up.
No, they have to be, they have to be voted up.
So they have to fill out an application saying they want to go from alternate to permanent?
Right, yeah.
So it's not automatic?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it takes us to an item pulled from the consent agenda. Item B was Proposed Resolution Number 15085, authorize the city manager to sign an internal agreement between the city, Boynton Beach, and the Village of Gulf providing fire rescue services.
I pulled it. My concern is that you're offering a lower rate to the Village of Gulf than the citizens of Boynton Beach pay for fire service as measured by the property taxes, millage rates, and I don't think, you know, we should be giving a sweetheart deal to Village of Gulf, paid by the middle class, and people on fixed income in Boynton Beach. And so I'm not going to vote for it. A second issue, if you vote for it, that might be a potential problem, and I'd like to ask the city attorney, is if there's discussion later on about going to Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, if we did that, would there be any problems in breaking this contract?
No. Ordinarily, we would add language to a contract that deals with all possibilities like that, and then that would also be the subject of negotiations with any third party that would take over the service. So a couple of solutions could be available.
So there isn't anything in this current contract to address that, or does there need to be?
I don't think there's any specific language to that effect, as I recall.
Fire chief, did we not raise them about $40,000 a year in what they were paying? We did do an increase. I was just remembering, was it 40,000?
We did. Fire chief Ray Carter, for the record. We did increase the amount that they pay. The negotiated amount was up to $200,000. Originally, if the contract would have continued at its current rate with the 4% multiplier, it would have been 158,000 for the year, but we were able to negotiate up to $200,000 for the year coming up, and they wanted a 10-year contract and to keep the current multiplier language in there. That's basically what was negotiated.
Which is, which is 4%?
That's, well, it's 4% or the May CPI, whichever is greater.
What is the total, do you know the total operating budget in that?
I can't answer that. I don't know if Christine is here or not.
No, she had to leave.
Okay, that's, it's a little over a million. Just over a little million dollars, the total budget. Okay, thank you, Chief.
Is there a motion on Proposed Resolution Number 15019 on first reading? I'll turn to the city attorney.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, authorizing landscaping debris stockpiling in the M1 zoning district by amending the Land Development Regulations, Chapter 1, Article 2, to establish a new use and corresponding definition, amending Chapter 3, Article 4, Section 3D Use Matrix to designate landscaping debris stockpiling as a conditional use in the M1 zoning district, amending Chapter 3, Article 4, Matrix Notes to adopt the new Note 103, setting forth minimum site and operational conditions of operation of the stockpiling site, providing for conflict severability inclusion and an effective date.
This is Proposed Ordinance 15019 on first reading. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Show the motion passes four to one. Takes us to Proposed Ordinance Number 15019 on first reading. I'll turn to the city attorney.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, authorizing landscaping debris stockpiling in the M1 zoning district by amending the Land Development Regulations, Chapter 1, Article 2, to establish a new use and corresponding definition, amending Chapter 3, Article 4, Section 3D Use Matrix to designate landscaping debris stockpiling as a conditional use in the M1 zoning district, amending Chapter 3, Article 4, Matrix Notes to adopt the new Note 103, setting forth minimum site and operational conditions of operation of the stockpiling site, providing for conflict severability inclusion and an effective date.
This is Proposed Ordinance 15019 on first reading. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the, I know, discussion?
Yes, I would. Attorney, I have a couple of questions, please. Speaking to the gentleman who's at the mic over there, I was informed there's a list of obligations that should be done to check out that this property, it's proper or improper for this usage. I also raised the question that the chairman of the P and D Board, Mr. Katz, spoke for the owner. Originally, my understanding from you was that this would not be going before this board, and since Mr. Katz is the chairman of this board, spoke for this board, the first question I have is, is he a lobbyist for the company that is owned? To me, the idea that he's chairman and is speaking up on an issue like this, let alone that the commission is even considering shorting the time span that the gentleman at the mic says there's X amount of obligations checklist that should be done, I have a big question mark on the procedure and what we're doing and why we're speeding it up. The other factor is, what I was informed by the city, is that the gentleman who has been doing the recycling is in no rush to get back to the parcel of land. I'm also informed that supposedly there was, there are 70 employees doing this recycling, and I found out it's only like 10. So the worrying about people losing their jobs, the idea that the person who's doing the recycling is not concerned by time, then I ask a simple question, why don't we do it the proper way and let this gentleman do his job?
Well, there was a lot of questions in there.
Yes, there was.
Let me address the one with respect to the sequence of the adoption of the ordinance. When we first, as the commission first discussed this, the concept was to have first reading tonight and second reading at the second meeting in August. As it turned out, the P and D Board's schedule would have, their meeting would have occurred after second reading. So there is a special meeting of the P and D Board next Tuesday night to make certain that they review and make a recommendation to the commission. I believe that you asked Mr. Katz the same question that you posed tonight, which is whether or not he was a lobbyist at the last commission meeting, and his answer was he was not.
That was not my question.
There was, there would be no other prohibition for any member of the public, including the chair of the P and D Board, from expressing a point of view with respect to an issue that might come before the commission. Ultimately, when the matter comes before the Planning and Development Board, if he identifies a conflict of interest that was, a legal conflict of interest that would prevent him from voting, I'm sure he'll do so at that time.
Well, I still say, the idea that he's chairman, the idea there's a question, the idea that we're speeding up something that should be done by this gentleman's committee, I have a big question mark on what's right and wrong. I know you're the attorney, but there's procedure, and political maneuvering occurs, and the idea that this gentleman cannot do what he's supposed to do, I question.
Commissioner, ordinarily, the sequence of adopting an ordinance of this nature would take much longer than it's taking, but it seemed to be the will of this commission to expedite review of this ordinance because of a particular use. I will point out that the ordinance is not site-specific. The commission has talked about it as though it applies to one specific business, but actually the ordinance applies to all businesses, potential businesses of this nature in the M1 zoning district.
Okay, I'd like to know the list of checklist that should be done and how long it should take reasonably, and if I'm wrong, then I retract everything I'm saying.
Andrew Mack, Interim Development Director, City Engineer. The list you're speaking to of the items in the proposed ordinance, there are several that the, any applicant who would make application for a BTR would have to comply with within 12 months. That's the way the ordinance is currently written. A lot of these, these provisions were written for this type of use in our preliminary investigation and would comply.
So you're saying what I thought you originally said, that the time is sufficient, the shortened period of time, and you're saying every criteria has been met?
No, what I'm saying is the timeframe that we had to study this and the items that we looked at are reflected in the ordinance. If we had more time, we may, there may be changes, and this is why this is a pilot program for 18 months. So this will come back before us, and it also removes the grandfather in. So in 18 months, we have the opportunity to actually revoke this ordinance, to let it sunset. So this is a pilot program in a sense for 18 months so that we can study this and have the proper time to make any tweaks to this language that we, that we, the planning staff think is necessary or commissioned.
So you're saying, you're saying that this is sufficient, the time, to do this, and you have no problems in this timetable?
The timetable was set by commission. Obviously, we'd rather have the study period to do a thorough study.
Thank you. You just said what I wanted to hear, because you said it before. Thank you.
I have a motion is second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Mark?
No.
Mr. McCray?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casella?
Yes.
Vote is four to one.
Okay. Next is unfinished business. Commission discussion on direction and disposition of the old high school. Who wants to start?
Well, Mayor, as a result of our strategic planning session in mid-June, the commission asked that this item be placed on tonight's agenda to continue...
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casella?
Yes.
Vote is four to one.
Okay. Next is unfinished business. Commission discussion on direction and disposition of the old high school. Who wants to start?
Well, Mayor, as a result of our strategic planning session in mid-June, the commission asked that this item be placed on tonight's agenda to continue, or to have a discussion on whether or not you choose to demolish the high school building. We did get updated quote, an updated quote on what it would cost for the demolition, which is approximately $190,000, plus some cost to relocate some electrical and IT lines, I believe, for an additional $10,000. With contingency restoration of the property and so forth, it's estimated to be somewhere between 250 and 275,000.
I'll start.
Go ahead.
Well, there's limited amount of historical buildings in Boynton Beach, and the buildings that have been restored and saved in other parts of the county have been an asset to those communities, such as, you know, Town Square, the, I mean, Delray Old School and the high school, Palm Beach High School, and the railroad station up in West Palm, the old courthouse in West Palm Beach. These have all added to the city. They're cities, and I think Boynton High School would add to Boynton Beach. And the idea that there's, the city can't afford to save the women's club and the old high school here is kind of a Sophie's Choice thing, and I don't think that's really a good way to look at it. And if we want to do it, we could, and it would be, add to the community. So I'm in favor of giving it one more chance to put together a citizens committee to actually work for saving it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. McRae.
Thank you. I sat up here before, when we had a citizenry committee who said that they was going to go out and raise funds and dollars, and they was going to do this, jump through hoops and everything, and I don't know whatever happened to the dollars, but nobody never came back and said, you know, this is how much we have raised thus far. Now, when we're talking about saving history, I want to talk about what happened to Pointon Elementary School. I attended Pointon Elementary School. We had an old high school there, because it was our high school. I remember sitting on the porch a many days at that school, swinging my legs. The auditorium was one that we had blackboards that we had to push up in order to have meetings. We had several individuals who approached a commission prior. We had Reverend Lee, Reverend Davis, and some more members from the community who said, let's save our history. They appeared before a board down here. Reverend Davis broke down in tears. He said, what are you guys doing to our history? That was our history then. So the only history that we have is like memories. It's nice to save a lot of things, if you can save a lot of things, but that high school over there, to be honest, is in disrepair. And I think, you know, we need to bite the bullet and move forward. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. McRae.
I just have some questions, because I'm not used to changing my vote when I think something is, is right. We hired Treasure Coast for approximately $60,000. We had a meeting of the minds of the people to help define and tell us what they want by the high school. Treasure Coast created four plans, which were all inclusive of the high school. We have a pending lawsuit, and I realize, and I've been advised and told, that it's pretty much a closed case. I'm not an attorney, I'm not a judge. To me, a lawsuit is not closed until the final decision. I've been hesitant about and stating continuously that when there's a lawsuit, you don't pursue. So all these factors that I said, I'm just confused that why we wasted our time with the citizenry, why we spent $60,000 inclusive of using the high school, and now, all of a sudden, we want to tear it down. Now, understand, and I will say it emphatically and indubitably, that I was for tearing it down. But the issue of being a political leader is initially you state the word "I" what I think is right or wrong. But then, when you get the citizenry involved and you hear what they say, the word "I" disappears, and it becomes "we," what the people want. So to move forward, to tear it down after what has been done, I think it's incorrect. And my scape is that the lawsuit is still going on. So I think it's wrong for us to vote to tear the high school down now with all these issues, money spent, and the heartbeat of the people who volunteered their time to come and voice their opinion. We're not listening to the people.
Well, let me tell you this. The building is a hazard, has been a hazard for years. It's, you know, it's falling apart. If we don't tear it down, the next storm probably will. But the roof is falling, it's absolutely, you can't, you have to wear a hazmat suit in order to go in that building. We have a school next to it that we preserve. It's on the register now, the national register, I believe. The city pays $200,000 a year minimum to keep that building. We have to support it because they can't quite make enough to do it. There could be more in the years to come, we don't know. But we've already preserved that one. It's sitting there, it's very historical for us. The high school, there's been a lot of emotional cry, and the same people probably here that have been here, I've been up here for some years now, the same people saying, oh, save the high school, save the high school. And I keep telling them, city doesn't have the money now, it's not going to have the money. You're talking for $5 million if you want to even just to get it into some kind of a usable state. If it costs 1.2 million just to get it, we're, it ain't going to fall apart. It's time for it to come down. You talk about the Treasure Coast Planning Council, they did do four things, saying, with the high school, we went back and said, give us one without the high school, which they did. They suspended it. Another one, I can tell you, we're talking about the Town Square Project, which is a 16 acres with a new city hall, a new police station, all that. And these developers are saying, what about that old building sitting over there? And that, and that's a problem. And I think if that building was down, we'd have a lot more interest, because that's, it'll cost around, a little under $200,000 to tear it down. That's something they wouldn't have to deal with, and they would know what to do with that land. I think it would send a strong message to those, we've had five or six people come in now, talking to us about this Town Square Project, and that one of their concerns is that old building sitting there. I can tell you that. So it's, it's nice to be emotional and say, geez, save this, save that, and I don't see it. I can, if you want to save the cornerstone and make some historical monument somewheres, that's fine, but it's time for the building to come down. We've talked about it, we've argued about it, and we've had input. I've had the input for years and years, as Commissioner McRae will tell you, we've sat up here and heard this over and over. But it's definitely time for that building to come down.
First, I'd like to thank all the people who have emailed, called pro-incon this building. That's pretty impressive. Let's take the emotional factor out of this. It's a structure. It's two-by-fours, it's nails, it's concrete. That's what it is. What it does possess is memories. A lot of you probably in this room here have either went to the school or had a child and went to the school, and that's great. But it's time. We've got numbers here, and the one that was given to the commission here was the last study done by the city to make the building weather tight, to stop the deterioration from the weather. This was done in 2011, and the numbers ranged from the low of 2.5 million to 3.2 million. That's just a closing that shell to make it weather tight to stop the deterioration. Now, here's what I have an issue with, because this topic comes up like every six months or a year, and God forbid, if we do knock it down, we will have nothing to talk about here in Boynton Beach. But with that being said, for 20 years, the school has been closed, 20 years, and it started deteriorating shortly after it was closed. And shame on the former city leaders, the city commissioners, that never took it upon themselves to preserve a piece of history of Boynton Beach for the last 20 years. I've been on this commission about two years now, and I have seen no grassroots efforts to come forward with a plan or with money or with grants to start this. We had one potential developer, well, he was an architect, he wasn't a developer, and as, as the plans went forward, it was found out that it was smoke and mirrors. We don't have the money, folks. And as you leave here tonight, I want you to go, just if we can see it, take a quick look. There's a tree growing out of the roof, the facade is peeled off, the barrel tiles are all loose with a blue top flapping around up there. That building would not be allowed to exist in any community the way it is right now. Look at, what I had loved to save that building, we should have been thought about 15 years ago. That's when, that's when this discussion should have been having here. The discussion tonight is, if you take the emotional part out of it, is that structure safe? Can it be rehabbed? Yeah, it can be rehabbed, but like the mayor had alluded to, we're trying to bring developers in here. And when they see that building, it's filled with asbestos, which is a hazardous material, which costs thousands and thousands of dollars to remove. The developers take a step back. I'm proposing tonight that we give these developers here, let's move Boynton forward. I'm a history guy. I was one of the, the old veterans park, I fought that name, Dewey Park, to keep the name Dewey, who helped plait it to Boynton Beach. I understand that history is important to Boynton Beach, but this should have been done a long, long time ago. And, you know, I told a story about, I had a terminally ill aunt, and, you know, it came to time to, you know, we're going to move forward or we were going to, you know, end it. And that's an emotional decision, okay? I don't get quite as emotional when it comes, when I look at a deplacated building, disrepair with thousands of dollars of hazardous materi, would cost thousands of dollars removed hazardous materials for it. The city does not have the money. To be quite frank with you people, we don't even have the money to knock it down. That's going to have to be worked out. But the time has come, folks. It really has. And it's a sad day here for Boynton Beach, but hopefully, we can move forward from here.
Okay.
I have one question, and that's to the city attorney. Are we still legally in a lawsuit?
We are in a lawsuit, but the pending lawsuit has nothing to do with the development plan for the building. There were two lawsuits to start. We won that first lawsuit. The only case that's pending is a breach of contract. Whether the building is there or not there will have no difference in that case.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I have, well, a couple of comments. First, it was either 1972 or '73, John Sullivan, Dr. John Sullivan, FAU, I took a black history course, and I agree with Commissioner McRae, perhaps, no, no, perhaps, about it. Black history has been completely under-reported in this country, and that's a sad thing and should be rectified. But two wrongs don't make a right. And so just because the black community high school was torn down doesn't make a good reason to tear down the, what historically was the white community high school. It just doesn't add up that way. And secondly, I agree with Commissioner Casella, it should have been done 20 years ago. Who was there that wouldn't support it then, I wonder? And since then, it's been malignant neglect. The, where was, oh, somebody once told me the best time to plant a tree is 50 years ago. Well, the best time, you're right, would have been to do it 20 years ago, but the second best time to build a tree, or plant a tree is today. So I think there's enough initiative now to actually do something to put it together again. And I've, what they do in Europe with 500-year-old buildings and stuff, it takes 10 years, but it becomes a community event. And it helps build community spirit to have something of this kind of magnitude to work on. And I think there's enough volunteers, if the city will allow them to volunteer, to actually do something. One of the persons, Big, that was here before, he left, his name was Butch, he was a helicopter pilot in Vietnam, but right now, he volunteers out at the Wildlife Refuge, Locks Atchay Wildlife Refuge, and the point is, they let him use heavy equipment. So if somebody can use heavy equipment, if federal government figured out a way to use volunteers to use heavy equipment, I don't see why the city can't figure out to let a lot of the citizens of Boynton also get really involved in repairing it. And I think there'd be enough, I'm a contractor, there's enough people around that would be interested in actually doing the painting and doing the ripping out, that it wouldn't be as much as you're all saying.
Well, I think Mr. McRae will. You haven't set up here on the years than we have, but I think Commissioner McRae and I have, we've heard them same exact arguments. The volunteers are going to come forward, the volunteers are going to raise the money. Just give us the chance, give us the opportunity, give us six months. We've given them years. Not one come forward, not one dollar. Haven't seen a dime or dollar. And it's, and I can tell you, you can wish it, and you can wish in one hand, spit in the other, and see which fills up first.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion of you forward demoing the old high school.
That good.
I have a motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Show the motion passes three to two. Go ahead.
Public comment?
Go ahead.
John Markey Boca Raton, for the record. I'd like to speak to you about preserving the high school. I stand here as managing member of Black Rock Residential Opportunity Fund, managing member of JKM Developers. The last time I stood in front of you, I was here in March, when you approved my site plan at Boynton Village. I stood here and told you that I was committed to building the traffic light at Old Boynton and Renaissance Commons. You may remember that. I hope you certainly remember what we did with the site plan at Cortina, because I think it shows a commitment to this community and a commitment to planning. So I stand here as a managing member of the largest financial institution on earth, and I'm telling you that tearing down this building is a travesty. It is the linchpin of any redevelopment of this 17 acres. I've looked at this property for two years. I think I first called Lori two years ago. I said, Lori, I have a plan for this high school. I can underwrite redeveloping this whole area and preserving that high school. And unfortunately, she said to me, we're in this agreement with the previous architect. So we couldn't do anything but have informal conversations. And we've had many of those as I've worked with the staff. And I want to compliment you on your fine staff, and especially Lori, Andrew, very fine staff you have. But the point being, this can be done. It can be underwritten. I can underwrite it. And I stand here with the expertise of the largest financial firm on earth. We are committed to, we've already spent $50 million at Cortina. We spent $100 million at our Osprey Oaks project adjacent to your golf course. So I say that not just to show that we have a financial commitment to your community, but also to show you that we have an expertise in doing large, complicated projects and funding them. We underwrite them as we plan them. This can be done. It's the proverbial bullet leaving the gun. Once it's gone, it can't come back. You knock it down, it's done. I implore you, do not knock this building down. There's too much heritage here. And it is the linchpin of any redevelopment that we've looked at planning-wise. That's why it's the linchpin of what Treasure Coast did. And any developer who stands up here and tells you different is a lazy developer. You don't want what they're bringing you. That's the linchpin of this community. I would back it up if you could get out of your own way. I'm just being blunt with you. First, there's this circus with this previous architect. Now you're in a lawsuit. I can't touch this while you're in a lawsuit. Clean your plate up. I will help you.
How do you get your money back?
We can, we can underwrite this so that as a whole, what we do and how we finance it pays for preservation of the school. And you can do a use in that school that can be underwritten, especially in the context of a larger 17-acre project.
Well, I've had several developers come in and tell me that until I go look at it, and then I walk away. Go ahead.
Well, I think this is a surprise. You know, we keep talking longevity. Well, this is short-term. I don't know you, but if you're real, and pardon me for phrasing it that way, then I think, out of respect to his company and out of respect to our own city and the respect of the people, we should not vote on this tonight. Also, I have a question on the ordinance. Jim? I have a question on the ordinance, historical ordinance. In order to tear it down, do we not have to have a replacement that's required?
No, replacement is not required under the terms of an ordinance.
In the ordinance with the--
No, sir.
All right, going back to this gentleman, I think it's fascinating what he just said, and I listen to everybody who's for tearing it down. This man is reversing the no vote logically. Here he is.
Yes, Commissioner.
Not give him 30 days. Is 30 days enough to find out who you are, what you are, and if you're real?
We've already voted.
Well, you cert--
Well, rescind it.
You certainly can find out if I'm real. I'm the guy who owns Cortina. I'm the guy who did that site plan. I'm the guy who, you know, has bonded the traffic light. You certainly can find out if I'm real.
I'm being a wise guy. I apologize.
Thank you. We've got some other people who want to speak.
Mark here, George, 248 Main Boulevard. It has been 20 years, and back in 2001, there was a historic preservation architect who presented an idea back then about doing joint venture, public and private. And he got laughed out of the room. When Treasure Coast came forward, one of the things that they suggested was public and private. One of the sad things, and what upset me tremendously with Treasure Coast, and as a CRA board member at the time, I voted to go forward with that study. What aggravated me was, after we voted on it, was to find out that they didn't want to talk about what the costs were, what, who was going to invest, where the sources of funds were going to come from. That was not part of what the Treasure Coast did. It was, that's why when it got to the charrettes, I sat in the room, but I did not participate in any group, because I was very disgusted that they weren't talking about how to pay for it. Because when you do something like that, you gotta have the funds to do it. Now, for 20 years, we've had every Tom, Dick, and Harry come forward, and then they do their due diligence, and then they walk away. I've seen it, Mayor, you and Matt have seen it more than anybody else. And what aggravates me is that we should be preserving our history. And I don't think you should be proceeding when you have pending litigation. Now, this is a frivolous lawsuit, to be very candid. It should have been thrown out a long time ago. It's talking about breach of contract. I've never seen a contract, and I've asked for it multiple times. In fact, I even asked for it from Lyman Reynolds, who is representing the city in the matter.
Excuse me just a minute, but the attorney's already told you, it doesn't matter what happens with that lawsuit, it doesn't affect whether the building's there or not. If the guy won the lawsuit, the building still doesn't go away. It does not affect the building.
Well, here's the problem. Once the building is gone, it gives him leverage for an appeal. And that's what's very disgusting about this, is people, especially in this market, are litigious.
Well, he's, I'm gonna go with my city attorney. I don't believe you're an attorney. I'm gonna go with his advice.
No, and I'm not claiming to be one, but the attorney representing the city in this is not Mr. Sheriff, it's Mr. Reynolds, if I'm not mistaken. Am I correct, Jim?
Lyman Reynolds is handling the breach of contract case. The breach of contract case does not seek the use of the old high school. It seeks monetary damages for breach of contract.
But you have to have a contract to have a breach.
Well, he asserts there is a contract, and we assert that there is--
There is no contract.
--no basis for that lawsuit.
Thank you.
There's a motion to dismiss pending. The case has been through several judges. There's a hearing scheduled on it, and, but as I've said, I don't think it has any, that the outcome of whether the building is there or not there has any effect on that lawsuit.
And I understand where you're coming from with that, but I think that the rush to this, when you have the opportunity to once get that behind you, so that it's not even on the table, it's been dismissed, then you can move forward, okay? Which whatever way you go, I understand, okay? But I think that you have to have a clear, off-the-table, dismissed, final judgment--
All right, we heard you say that now a couple of times.
And that's when you can then proceed.
I understand. I heard you say it several times.
The gentleman that was here before is reputable. The companies that he spoke of are very good companies. I know that from being in the industry. And, you know, maybe if you table the thing, you wait 30 to 60 days, bring it back, I think that's prudent and cautious management of the situation.
Thank you.
I'm Von Seale Smith, 1747 Banyan Creek Court, 3343 Sticks. Jerry and other commissioners, I'm an old familiar face in terms of this high school question, since I was involved with the Historical Society and still am for many years. Just a few years ago, in fact, three to be exact, Hedrick Brothers and Rick Gonzalez both had examined that high school and said that to duplicate it would cost over $20 million, even as the building currently stands. It's hollow tile construction, not cement block. That's a misnomer. But it has, there are other possibilities. We've talked about raising money, but you have to have some cooperation, some assurances from the city council that something's going to happen. You give us the seed money, give us the money you're talking about tearing it down with for seed money, give it to the Historical Society, give us a 10-year lease, renewable if we show promise, and for, renewable lease for 89 years, and it may not matter then if climate change takes place, whether the building is standing or not. But anyway, we have to have authority to go out and begin raising money. You can't just, you have to have, it's helpful to have seed money, but you have to have some indication from the city that the city is willing to work with you, and the Historical Society has never had that. It's always been, go find the money, go find the money. Jerry has said that to me numerous times. Now, Jerry, the city needs a cultural center. That old high school would make a wonderful cultural center. I could even see it being named the Jerry Taylor Cultural Center. What a legacy that would be.
I can.
Anyway, I urge you, Mr. Casello, to consider that this is not only a historic building, it's hurricane sound regardless of what's happening to the interior. The building itself is structurally strong. Architects, restoration architects have recently attested to this, and they would attest again. Let's save the building for Boynton and the people, and the people of Florida. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Barbara Riddy, 329 Southwest 13th Avenue, Boynton Beach, Florida. I thought that I'd give everyone a little refresher course on what our Historic Preservation Ordinance actually says. You'll find this in Article 9, Building Construction and Historic Preservation Requirements. Preserve, Protect, Enhance, Perpetuate Resources Which Represent Distinctive and Significant Elements of the City's Historical, Cultural, Social, Economic, Political, Archaeological, and Architectural Identity and/or Serve as Visible Reminders of the City's Culture and Heritage. Avoid Demolition or Other Adverse Effect Upon Historic Properties and Districts Which Would Cause Irreparable Loss to the City. Assist Neighborhoods to Achieve a Positive Neighborhood Identity and Sense of Place. We shall endeavor to have the resource repaired rather than demolished, and shall take into account any comments and recommendations by the Historic Resources Preservation Board. The Board may take appropriate actions to effect and accomplish the preservation of the resource, including but not limited to negotiations with the owner and other interested Removal of Designation, which everyone is aware of, the high school is already designated. It's on our local register. Removal of Designation. A designation may be removed by the City Commission based upon the Historic Resource Board's recommendation. Such a recommendation shall be based upon new and compelling evidence and evaluation of work or natural cause producing an adverse effect to the property or the district. Maintenance and Repair of Designated Properties. Demolition by Neglect is Prohibited. Affirmative Maintenance is Required. The owner of a property designated pursuant to this chapter must individually or as a part of the district or zone shall comply with all applicable codes, laws, regulations governing the maintenance of the property. All such properties shall be preserved against decay and deterioration and shall be free from structural defects through prompt corrections. No building or structure or property located within a district shall be demolished without first receiving a certificate of appropriateness for new construction. The applications for demolition and new construction shall be reviewed by the Board simultaneously. The existence of one or more conditions may be the basis for denial of a demolition application by the Historic Resources Preservation Board. The resource contributes significantly to the historic character of a designated property or district. The resource is capable of being repaired and reused in a practical and feasible manner. Retention of the resource would promote the general welfare of the city by providing an opportunity to study local history, architecture, and design, or by developing an understanding of the importance and value of a particular culture or heritage. Granting a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition would result in an irreparable loss to the city of a significant resource. Every study we've ever done on that school has come back and said it's an existing asset. You've not got one study in your box of studies that tells you, go ahead, knock it down, it's a worthless building. Not one. The papers I gave to you, I refer to the regular minutes of the City Commission meeting of January 21st, 2014, page four of the minutes, under Announcements, Community, and Special Events Presentations, except the Florida League of Cities Municipal Achievement Award for the City of Boynton Beach's Heritage Education Program, which is the winning entry in the Teaching Your City's History and Heritage category. Presenting the award is the Honorable P.C. Wu, Florida League of Cities President. Mr. Wu was impressed with the city. Not many cities have a high school built in 1927 next to an elementary school built in 1913.
Excuse me, we have that. You don't need to read the whole thing to us, so--
I'd like to read it into the record, sir.
If you'd leave it, we'll put it in the record.
Okay, well, I think everybody here would like to hear this. We won an award.
Go ahead.
Weren't you proud that evening? I was there that evening.
I was there, too.
Mr. Wu praised--
I was there, I was there.
Mr. Wu praised your historic preservation program.
Right.
Told us how lucky we were to have two historic schools next to each other. You have a wonderful historic preservation program, a wonderful historic preservation planner. We have nothing but praise and awards and accolades, and he's gone out and got grant money. We've brought nothing but praise to the city of Boynton. Do you really want to embarrass us by knocking down one of the remaining pieces of our history? I didn't go to that school. I have no emotional attachment to it, but I recognize its importance to this city.
It will still be sitting there 10 years from now if we don't do anything--
That's fine with me.
Just like it is.
That's fine with me.
I know it's fine with you, but it's a safety hazard on this city.
No, it's, there's no safety hazard.
It's a mess that we need to get rid of it.
There's no safety hazard. No one goes in it.
Well, I'm sorry, but I, you know, you've made the same argument every time we've brought this up. You've come, I recognize you, and some of the others that come up, I'm taught, you come up with the same arguments. Not a dime has come forward, nothing's been done, it ain't gonna happen. I've had professionals in here look at that, and they take a look at it and walk away. They're saying, I ain't got five or seven million dollars to do anything with that building.
You heard Von Seale Smith tell you the same thing we've told you back and forth. This has been our argument forever. We can't raise any money for the building until you give it to us.
The city hasn't got the money, and we ain't gonna give you money for that, because if we had that kind of money, we've got a lot of other things that would take priority. I'll tell you that.
I understand that. We had a perfect development project, and you yanked the rug out from underneath it. So--
Let me just say something. It's getting personal. Let's not get it personal. The idea is, personally speaking, the gentleman who stood up before you, I was taken back by his words. Why? Because he uses a simple word called dollars. Dollars to tear, dollars to build. If, again, with all due respect to you, if you're real, then I'd like to know who you are, what you are, and if you financially can make something happen. I think to the credit of the city, we should find out. I think it's that simple. And the idea that this has been going on 15 or 20 years, another 60, 90 days, obviously doesn't mean anything. Again, as one of the speakers spoke about the lawsuit, I reiterate, I know we have an attorney, a very fine attorney, but there's an issue. He's not the judge. He's not the final decision. In the court of law, there are many surprises all the time. That's why you have so many movies, and that's why you have so many series on TV, the surprise. So out of respect to ourselves, the citizens of Boynton Beach, I very much love the chance to sit down with you, and I would hope everyone else up here would want to hear the same, what he has to say.
I appreciate your time, but I really would hate to have to call Mr. Wu and ask him to come back down and take the award away from us.
I don't think he'll do that. It wasn't for that school building. Yes, next.
Paul Beeler, 2623 Lake Drive North, District 2. I kind of, Mr. Merker pretty much said what I wanted to come up here and say. We have, the biggest issue with this building is not having funding. We have a gentleman that's sitting behind me right now who's saying he can get funding. We're saying we have developers who have funding to knock it down and build something new, but if we have a developer who's willing to save it, why not? I mean, the biggest argument is funding, and we have someone here, why are we not giving them the amount of time to see if it's feasible or not? I mean, I understand it's been going on and on, but we actually have someone, and Black Rock is a big name. I mean, I don't know if you know that, but Black Rock is a big name. And if you have someone from there coming up here right now saying that they're willing to invest in your city, that is huge. And the other thing I wanted to say is that I also hope that maybe with things like this, the open-mindedness of saving the history, I mean, I didn't go to that school, but it gives you a sense of pride to see something old. I mean, you travel to Rome so you can touch a column that's 1,000 years old. It's kind of cool to go into a building that's 100 years old. And for Mr. McCray, I'm sorry that Pointe Sienna didn't work out, but maybe there are other buildings that need to be saved for that history, and this is a stepping stone for the city of Boynton to just look at history in general and to save history overall for everyone, because it's important. It's where we came from. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. Commissioner Fitzpatrick is my commissioner. Before I get started, I did want to say, Mr. McCray, Commissioner McCray, I'm sorry about what happened, but I sit on the Historic Preservation Board, and we are actively working to get the Wells community together to redo something. So, you know, unfortunately, our Preservation Board didn't exist back when all this happened at Pointe Sienna, so I'm very sorry. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to speak. I should, I just disclosed to you that I sit on the Historic Preservation Board. I just wanted to express my support for keeping and renovating the old Boynton High School. You, the commissioners, regularly mention how much you want our beautiful historic city to be more like the other major player cities like Delray, Lake Worth, and West Palm Beach. Well, part of what makes them so attractive is their continued recognition and support of their historic buildings and their neighborhoods. We have a major player in historic planning in Warren Adams. We are exceptionally lucky to have him, as Barbara mentioned. We are one of the original cities in Palm Beach County. I have the old program from when Boynton Beach turned 100 years old years ago. Mayor Taylor, you were the mayor then as well, because I was there with my father at the celebrations, celebrating our 100th anniversary as a city. We are one of the old ones. We should be taking pride in the fact that we are one of the oldest cities in the county and embracing our heritage and our unique history by renovating and preserving the old high school. I wish we were lucky enough to have a Prince Charles-type person who supports repurposing historic buildings to stand here and encourage you to do the right thing. I wish we had a major celebrity to stand here and support this building like a Jimmy Buffett who works to protect the humanities and oceans, a Julian Lennon who extensively supports-- supports Nepal Water Environmental and Lupus Projects, or a Sting who pioneered Amazon preservation, but we do not. Our local celebrities, like Rick Roden, who's from Boynton Beach and has not been back in the area for years, you know, he grew up three houses down from me, Donald Trump and George Hamilton are busy with other charitable endeavors or running for president, and they can't stand here to encourage you to protect and renovate our beautiful and unique high school. So please support the repurposing of our beautiful building and one of our most unique historical treasures here in our city. And I will volunteer, just like I volunteer to sit on the Historic Preservation Committee, I'll volunteer to actively work on any committee you set up to deal with this high school. I've brought forth ideas to help people in the city, help pay for any renovation, to provide a continuing stream of money, and, you know, people just go, "Oh, okay." But I actually found a way to help give you some money, which is what you wanted. I wish I could win the Lotto and pay for it myself, but that's obviously not happening anytime soon. But, you know, at least I will put forth some of my money, my time, and I found a way for you to get an income stream coming in, so I'll be happy to talk to you about that later. Thank you for your time.
Steve Anton, 234 Southeast 2nd Avenue, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33435. I've got a question. Mayor, where are you from?
I don't see where that's relevant. Just tell me what you want to say.
Mayor, I'm just asking a simple question. I'm a citizen. I'd like to know, where are you from?
Where I'm from?
Where are you from?
Where I was born.
Where are you from?
Where I was born. Is that what you want to know, where I was born?
This is, this is an indication of how hard it is for gentlemen like this to come and work in a place like this. You can answer a simple question.
I'll answer. Just tell me, you want to know where I was born?
I want to know where you're from.
When you say where I'm from, you want to know where I was born?
Mr. Commissioner Merker, where are you from?
New Jersey, Farallon, New Jersey.
Mr. Casello, Commissioner Casello, where are you from? Okay, this is a part of the fundamental problem. You're from Boynton Beach. Okay? Our history is Boynton Beach history. You, Mayor, think that building is just garbage. No, all your architects, you see, that's the fib. All the architects, you've told us, that is stronger today than almost any building in Boynton Beach.
Those were your words. I never called that, that name.
Well, you, there are architectural reports saying that's good, sound structure. Okay? If there's a Class 5 hurricane from 1928 came through here, that building was stood it, withstand it again. That's historic. The 1928 hurricane, that building held 70% of the population of Boynton Beach and saved their lives. That's historic. Now, Mayor, you are also in the Air Force as a sergeant, correct?
Correct.
You are Mayor of Boynton Beach. The jobs are very similar. You are given orders. You are supposed to follow those orders. Is that correct?
It's correct.
You've been given orders by the electorate, by the citizens, to save that building. That is a direct order. 60% of the population said, "Save that." All the staff studies have said, "Save that." That and those are direct orders.
It's never been a referendum. I don't know that 60% of the population said, "Save it."
That's not, your mayor, it's a direct order. You said on your website, for your last electorate, "I will always listen to the people of Boynton Beach."
I do listen to them. I listen to all of them.
And, yes, you're listening to all of them.
I see some of them here tonight.
And again, they've told you what to do.
Some of the same I've seen over, over on the same issue.
Mayor, here's a problem. You are not allowed to have a personal opinion. You have to do what they say. You can't sit there and say, "It costs too much." You're not allowed to do that. You do not, get it, get the emotion out of it. Get the emotion out of it, Mayor. You cannot say, "I want to tear that building down." You're not allowed to, because it costs too much. That isn't in anything that's been brought before this meeting.
I've been elected by the majority of the residents of this city to make those decisions.
Exactly. Thank you. Thank you. Did he just say that? You just said the decision.
Sir, excuse me. We have a rule of decorum for the commission meeting. It's not a debate back and forth. The mayor's been very polite in not pointing that out.
I just want to know why he is not listening to the citizens that he just said he would listen to. That's my question. All of you up there are supposed to listen to them. We're not supposed to listen to you. If we give orders, you're supposed to follow them. You were given a mandate by 60% of the population of this city.
I didn't see that. 60%? Where are you getting that number?
The referendum vote, just, what, was it 2006?
There was not a referendum on this issue. Never been one.
Okay, fine. If you want to sit there and do that ignorance, that's fine. This is why people like this have such a hard time dealing with you.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm, make your, I'm through talking with you. If you want to, anything else, say it.
My point is that every, like Barbara says, every report has said, "Save the building." That's it. Thank you.
Okay, then I'm gonna wrap it up here. I think there's nobody else. I'll just say that I understand and I respect the gentleman coming up and saying he has the money to do it. You're about the sixth or seventh person that's come up and told me that, but it always never happens. And I will say, just to, in my opinion, that old building is not historic. I do not see it as historic. There's a lot of emotional attachment to it. There's nothing to make that building historic. It's an old building. I'll grant you that. It's been there a long time. It's very old, but it's not historic, in my book. And I'll tell you why. I've served on the Palm Beach County Historic Board for many years. In fact, I chaired the Historic Board for Palm Beach County, so I know a little bit about saving historic things. I've done that. I have that background. And I can tell you that that building, to me, is not, there's, I don't see the historic relevance there. And we've had a vote, three to one, to, three to two, to tear it down. So we're gonna move on.
Mayor, one point. If you would also look at the agenda item, we need to do something with the, if we're moving forward with the demolition, the ordinance 1301.
Where's that?
That's regarding the designation.
Yeah, where's, where's that on the agenda?
It's under, in the conclusions, at the end.
Oh, at the end of our backup?
Yes.
Yeah, we need a motion to remove the historic, local historic designation.
To the mayor, as far as-
City Attorney?
Yep. Part of the process will be the little return of an ordinance to you rescinding that previous vote.
Okay.
You have to undesign it.
So we'll do that. It'll come back to us on that, to resend that.
And Mayor also is the funding source. It's not currently budgeted, so we want to-
Yeah, we'll work on that, too, right? It comes back. I'm gonna talk with the CRA to see if there ain't some money available there to help us with that.
Can I ask a question? Please.
Go ahead.
I just, we don't have the money to tear it down, but we're tearing it down. So we're going into, I'll use improper wording, our savings to tear it down when we don't have the money. Does that make sense?
No, that's not true.
Well, you just said it.
We're gonna find the money.
Everybody, oh, you're gonna find it.
Yeah.
So you borrow from Peter to pay Paul.
No, we're not.
That's what you're doing. Don't tell me you're not.
There's other options to get it.
No.
Maybe you're not knowledgeable about it.
You want what you want. You want to go into a debate because you wanted the word "I" again?
We're gonna move on.
Continuously.
We're moving on.
You can talk. It's a common sense. Why am I out of order? You gave me permission to talk.
No, I'm-
Oh, now you're reneging.
Yeah.
Because I don't agree with you.
We're through with that issue.
So you're right, you're God.
You're talking about something not on the agenda. Okay. Next one is a proposal ordinance number 15-017 on second reading. City Attorney?
Do we do new business?
Approved request of an 10-foot-wide utility easement in conjunction with the I Storage Warehouse Edition Project, MSPM 15-005, under concurrent review, located at 2951 Southwest 14th Place within the M1 Light Industrial Zoning District, applicant Bradley Miller, Miller Land Planning, Inc.
But what happened to 12B?
Yeah, we have 12B still, Mayor.
12B.
We tabled 12A to next meeting.
Continue discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Continued discussion regarding financial feasibility of outsourcing police and/or fire rescue services to Palm Beach County.
Well, let me-
Do you want to start?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start. I don't know how this got on here, but I'm not in favor of this.
Okay. Yeah, you know, once again, with the escalating budgets that we have every year, public safety taking up over 67% of our capital budget, did I say that right? Yeah. I asked for a study to come into the city to see if there was any cost savings by going, contracting to the county, both for fire and for police. And I think we had, not me, but prior commission had a somewhat discussion on it back in 2012. A partial study was done. The numbers that I have in front of me were taken from 2012 and, which mean absolutely nothing today, but just a comparison, the Sheriff's Department put a proposal forward with a, almost a $22 million budget to run the police department at the time, and at that time, we were paying almost $25 million. So there was, there was a difference. Also, with the, with the fire department, I don't have a study. I got, the latest one I got is Delray. I'm not gonna compare apples and oranges and get a lot of confusion here, but what I would like to suggest, what I would like to suggest to my fellow commissioners here, that we entertain the idea of maybe putting this out on the ballot in the next election coming up, asking the public how they feel towards moving forward to at least get some studies into the city of going county fire or county police or either or. I think that if the general public has an interest in doing that, and then it come back to the commission, and then at that time, and at that time only, we can give direction to the city manager to go out to get those reports. If the, if the vote or the general consensus is that it's, there's no appetite for that, and then it's, it's done. It doesn't move forward. But I think that at least we should have to entertain the idea of getting, getting this at least on the radar. As you know, every budget we talk about, we're scurrying around trying to find the dollars, healthcare, pensions, you know, the thing we haven't talked about, especially for the police, is that the potential, the new police station, which is, the estimates are coming between 20 and 25 million dollars to build this building. We have no idea what we're gonna do. That's either gonna have to get a higher mileage rate or bond. That's the only two ways we're gonna be able to pay for this potential building, and we're in dire need of a new police station, believe me. We're also in dire need of a new firing range. The chief has done a wonderful job with the resources that he's had here, and we should be commended. We got the, one of the best police forces in the world. But the bottom line is, public safety, can we afford it? Can we afford it in the future? And it's all I ask, is to get a general consensus, general public, if they would entertain the idea, and if that is, the answer is yes, and then we give the city manager some direction to get some reports in, and at that time, we compare apples and apples and oranges and oranges. That's simple, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Go ahead.
There's the right side, there's the left side, and there's the middle path. I'm not sure what I just heard. We have the wonderful police chief and a wonderful fire chief, and we have the best police force and the best fire department. That's what I think I just heard. But then, on the other hand, then why are we questioning them? We raised the money dollars. You know, it's interesting. Dollars, dollars for safety, dollars for security, dollars for the well-being of the city of Boynton Beach. To me, what I just heard was a political statement, almost a political statement, like I'm running for office in the county. This city, and at the reorganization meeting that Chief Katz had, was wonderful. The togetherness, the thought process of all the police officers that were there. It was called teamwork. The thing that we cannot forget and should not forget is what the people of Boynton Beach want. To put it on a referendum, what they have right now is security and safety. What more do you want? Why tear and question what you just said was a wonderful police chief, a wonderful police department, and a wonderful fire department? Help me. I don't get it. What we have now is wonderful. We should support the police. We should support the fire, and let's stay and keep what we have. It's just common sense.
Just for the record, Mr. Mayor, I'm not running for any political office-
I didn't say you were.
-of the district for. I'm very happy being a commission, especially on the county level. Just one word, affordability. Thank you.
Yes.
Again, safety.
I will say that I'm, I'm personally, at this point, not in favor of outsourcing our police and fire. They do do a great job. I think we're outstanding, but I understand that what Commissioner Vice Mayor is talking about is the future accountability is affordability. We gotta look at the years outside there, where it's, where we're going and how we're gonna afford it. There's no problem with looking at that. I could tell you, if you want to ask the people, all you gotta do is, to your public, is say, "Call me and let me know whether you want to keep them or you think we should outsource them." I think your phone will ring off the hook with comments, you know, one way or the other. So however you, I don't know how you want to pursue that.
Well, I just wanted to be like a legit, I don't want to come in here and say, "I got, you know, 200 calls are all in favor." I don't want to be skewed like that.
Yeah, I got you.
I wanted to be transparent, whatever, whatever it's kind of thing. Even if we could put something maybe in our utility bills, that might be another way to go.
Yeah.
You know, asking like a survey, asking the public.
Yeah, we could try and get a survey.
Survey like that and see.
Probably, because I, I think, but I'm personally, right now, I don't-
And I understand that, I respect that.
But I'll go, I'm okay with going to survey where they want to go. I think, I think I know how to come out, but I could be wrong.
It's a contradiction.
Yeah, no. Okay. Anybody else?
It's that simple.
You get that, the city manager? Is that good enough direction? Okay. Now we can go to proposed ordinance 15-017, second reading.
An ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida authorizing abandonment of a 10-foot wide utility easement in conjunction with the I Storage Warehouse Edition Project,